Nancy Strom, Julian Paul. James Strom Thurmond. Fritz, he was one complex guy. For what else would explain that he asked, I'm told by Nancy, a guy named Biden from the state of Delaware to be one of his eulogists? I'll never figure him out, and Strom, I won't forgive him. Lindsey, I always thought I was in control, but I knew down deep I wasn't. And I think this is his last laugh. For what else could explain a Northeast liberal's presence here as the only outsider speaking today? With the possible exception of Vice President Cheney. Strom Thurmond was the only man whom I knew who, in a literal sense, lived in three distinct and separate periods of American history and lived what would have been considered a full life in each of those periods, particularly in his beloved South. Born into an era of essentially unchallenged and unexamined mores of the South, reaching his full maturity in an era of fully challenged and critically examined bankrupt mores of his beloved South, and living out his final three decades in a South that had formerly rejected its past on race. At each of these stages, in my observation, and I was only with him the last three decades, Strom represented exactly where he came from. There's an old hymn that includes these lyrics. "Once to every man and nation comes the moment to decide in the strife of truth with falsehood for the good or evil side. Then it is the brave man chooses while the coward stands aside." No one ever doubted Strom Thurmond's physical courage. You've heard much written about it. Not 15 years ago, as reminded of this, I was coming across to vote in the Senate and going up the escalator, and a fellow who apparently had held a longtime grudge against Senator Thurmond, a tourist, literally interposed himself between me and Strom and said, and Thad may remember this, and said, "If you weren't so old, I would knock you," and Reverend, I will not say what he said, "I will knock you down." And I immediately stood between them. And Strom literally took off his coat and said, "Hold my coat, Joe." Pretty God. And I looked at him and said, "No, no, 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 no." And with that, he went down and did 25 pushups. He had to be 88, 87. He stood up and looked at me and said, "If you weren't so young, I'd knock you down." Strom Thurmond was also a brave man who, in the end, made his choice and moved to the good side. I disagreed deeply with Strom on the issue of civil rights and on many other issues, but I watched him change. We became good friends. I'm not sure exactly why or how it happened, Nancy, but you know, we did. And Fritz could never figure it out, neither could I. Fritz is my very closest friend in the Senate. But I do know that friendship and death are great equalizers, where our differences become irrelevant and lonely, the only thing that is left is what's in our heart. I went to the Senate emboldened, angered, and outraged at age 29 about the treatment of African Americans in this country, about everything that, for a period in his life, Strom had represented. But then I met the man. Our differences were profound, but I came to understand that, as Archibald MacLeish wrote, "It is not in the world of ideas that life is lived; life is lived, for better or worse, in life." Strom and I shared a life in the Senate for over 30 years. We shared a good life there, and it made a difference. I grew to know him. I looked into his heart, and I saw man, the whole man. I tried to understand him. I learned from him, and I watched him change oh so subtly. Like all of us, Strom was a product of his time. But he understood people. He cared for them. He truly wanted to help. He knew how to read people, how to move them, how to get things done. Never forget, we went down to see President Reagan. He and I had the Thurmond-Biden crime bill. And he was, we sat in a room with Senator, with President Reagan and with Ed Meese, Jim Baker, and William French Smith, the Attorney General. And Strom started to try to convince the President to sign onto our bill. And he turned to me, he said, "Joe, explain it to him." So I did my little bit, and it looked like the President was come along, and I swear the Lord and the Lord's house is true story. And with that, as Ed Meese, Mr. Vice President, thought the President might be convinced, Ed Meese stood up and said, "Mr. President, time to go, time to go." And with that, the President very dutifully looked, not dutifully, but very respectfully looked over and said, "Well, Strom," we were sitting next to him either side. "It's, uh, I have to go." And he had his hands on the table, the President, the President went to get up like this, and Strom grabbed his arm and pulled him back down his seat. I never saw anybody do that to a President. And the President, true story, the President looked very sternly at Strom. And Strom said with his hand still on his arm, he said, "Mr. President, y'all get to be my age, you'll understand, you gotta compromise." And the President then was about 85 years old. Strom knew America was changing and that there was a lot he didn't understand about that change. Much of that change challenged many of his long-held views, but he also saw his beloved South Carolina and the people of South Carolina changing as well. And he knew the time had come to change himself. But I believe the change came to him easily. I believe he welcomed it because I watched others of his era fight that change and never ultimately change. It would be humbling to think that I was among those who had some influence on his decision, but I know better. The place in which I work is a majestic place. If you're there long enough, it has an impact on you. You cannot, if you respect those with whom you serve, fail to understand how deeply they feel about things differently than you. And over time, I believe it has an effect on you. This is a man who, in 1947, The New York Times ran a lead editorial saying, "Strom Thurmond: Hope of the South", and talked about how he had set up reading programs, get better books for separate but equal schools. This is a man who was opposed to the poll tax. This is a man who I watched vote for the extension of the Voting Rights Act. This is a man who I watched vote for the Martin Luther King Holiday. And it's really easy to say today that that was pure political expediency, but I choose to believe otherwise. I choose to believe that Strom Thurmond was doing what few do once they pass the age of 50. He was continuing to grow, continuing to change. His offices were next door to mine in the Russell Building, or more appropriately, mine were next to his. And over the years, I remember seeing a lot change, including the number of African Americans on his staff and African Americans who sought his help. For the man who will see, time heals, time changes, and time leads him to truth. But only a special man like Strom would have the courage to accept it, the grace to acknowledge it, and the humility in the face of lasting enmity and mistrust to pursue it until the end. There's a personal lesson that comes from a page in American political history that is yet unwritten, but nevertheless, it resonates in my heart. I mentioned it on the floor of the Senate the other day. It's a lesson of redemption that I think applies today, and I think Strom, Strom, as he listens, will appreciate it. When I first arrived in the Senate in 1972, I met with John Stennis, another old Southern senator who became my friend. We sat at the other end of this gigantic, grand mahogany table he used as his desk that had been the desk of Richard Russell's. It was a table upon which the Southern Manifesto was signed, I am told. The year was 1972. Senator Stennis patted the leather chair next to him when I walked in to pay my respects as the new young senator, which was the order of the day. And he said, "Sit down, sit down, sit down here, son." And those who served with him know, he always talked like this. And he looked at him, and he said, "Son, what made you run for the Senate?" And like a darn fool, I told him the exact truth before I could think of it. I said, "Civil rights, sir." And soon as I did, I could feel the beads of perspiration pop out of my head and get that funny feeling. He looked at me, he said, "Good, good, good." And that was the end of the conversation. Well, well, 18 years later, after us having shared a hospital suite for three months at Walter Reed, and after him having tried to help me in another pursuit I had, we had become friends. I saw him sitting behind that same table 18 years later, only this time in a wheelchair. His leg had been amputated because of cancer, and I was going to look at offices because in my seniority, his office is available as he was leaving. I went in and sat down, and he looked at me as if it were yesterday, and he said, "Sit down, Joe, sit down, tap that chair." And he said something to startle him. He said, "Remember the first time you came to see me, Joe?" And I shook my head, I didn't remember. And he leaned forward and he recited the story. I said to him, "That was a pretty smart young fellow, wasn't I, Mr. Chairman?" He said, "Joe, I wanted to tell you something then that I'm gonna tell you now. Y'all are gonna take my office, aren't you?" And I said, "Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman." And he ran his hand back and forth across that mahogany table in a loving way. And he said, "You see this table, Joe? This is the God's truth." He said, "You see this table?" And I said, "Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman." He said, "This table is the flagship of the Confederacy from 1954 to 1968." He said, "We sat here, most of us from the Deep South, the old Confederacy, and we planned the demise of the civil rights movement." And he looked at me and said, "And now it's time. It's time that this table go from the possession of a man against civil rights to a man who has four civil rights." And I was stunned. And he said, "One more thing, Joe." He said, "The civil rights movement did more to free the white man than the black man." I looked at him, and I didn't know what he meant. And he said, in only John Stennis fashion, he said, "It freed my soul. It freed my soul." Strom Thurmond's soul is free today. His soul is free. The Bible says, "Learn to do well, seek judgment, relieve the oppressed, judge the fatherless, plead for the widow. Come now and let us reason together. Though your sins may be as scarlet, they shall be as white as snow." Strom, today, there are no longer any issues to debate. There's only peace, a patch of common ground, and the many memories that you've left behind. For me, those memories are deeply personal, and they will stay with me as long as I live. Strom Thurmond stood by me when others didn't, and it was against, when it was against his political interest to do so. I had been accused of something terrible, in my view, on the eve of the Bork nomination. I gathered the entire Senate, I was then chairman, the entire Judiciary Committee. And I said to Democrats and Republicans alike, "I will stand aside as chairman so it will not affect this proceeding." And the first man to jump to his feet was your father, and he said, "No." And I said, "Well, let me explain." He said, "You don't have to explain anything to me. You're my chairman." And with that, every one odd seriatum stood up, but Strom Thurmond was the first man on his feet, did not seek a single explanation for what I had been accused of. And clearly, when partisip was a winning option, he chose friendship. And I'll never forget him for it. I was honored to work with him, privileged to serve with him, and proud to call him my friend. His long life may well have been a gift of his beloved God, but the powerful and lasting impact he had on his beloved South Carolina and on his nation is Strom's legacy, his gift to all of us. And he will be missed. The British essayist William Hazlitt once wrote, quote, "Death conceals everything but truth and strips a man of everything but genius and virtue. It's a sort of natural canonization." The truth in genius and virtue of Strom Thurmond is what I choose and we all choose to remember today, to Nancy, to Strom, to Julie, and to Paul, to all his friends, to the people of South Carolina who knew him so well and loved him so much. "America mourns with you. I mourn with you, for I knew Strom well. I felt as warm as you did. I saw as strength as you did. I was the beneficiary of his virtues as you were. And I'll miss him as you will, as we all will." But he lived a long and good life. And I know that today, benevolent God has lifted his arms to Strom. I just don't know what Strom is saying to that benevolent God because you know he's saying something. So I say farewell, Mr. Chairman. We stand in the German until we meet again.
Context of white supremacy. Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, May 12, 2022. So I have been told this is our ninth and final study session on Essie Mae Washington Williams. Dear Senator, we are picking up in Chapter Nine, just after the portion where there have been books and what have you that have come out with rumors, "Oh, did Strom Thurmond have a non-white child?" And Essie Mae says that her white father is judgment-proof. The very next paragraph, that's where we will start what we heard that is the eulogy from our now-president, at the time Senator Joe Biden for the late J. Strom Thurmond. I will have nothing to say about that. I'll include it after we get done. We will only have one audio segment, just the remainder of Chapter Nine and the acknowledgements, and we will be all done. So we'll get our final thoughts in, and I'll even share an article or two talking about when all of the information was revealed that Essie Mae was Mr. Thurmond's offspring, how the white family responded and that sort of thing. And then we'll wrap it all up, one and done. Context of white supremacy. Essie Mae Washington Williams. Dear Senator, final audio segment.
The last time I saw my father was in 1999. For the first time in his 97 years, I sensed he was failing, though he continued to put on a brave face. He was slow, frail, and above all, his handshake was weak. The year before, I had sent him a Father's Day card. I had been sending similar cards and notes to him for years at this point, and other little letters as well, congratulating him when he won the Presidential Medal of Freedom, things like that. The cards would be simple things, flowers on the front, poetry inside. "We hope your day is as happy as it ought to be for you. We hope you'll just enjoy it, doing the things you like to do." And I'd sign it, "Essie, Williams &amp; Family." It was something that could have come from any constituent, and there was no way it could have gotten him into any trouble. On occasion, his office would send a note of acknowledgement, a form letter they would send to any well-wisher. I never had received, nor did I expect, a personal written acknowledgement from my father himself. That was too risky for him. That could be proof that could be used against him. But this time, he sent me a personal note of thanks. It was very simple. "Dear Essie Mae, thank you for your kind remembrance on Father's Day. Affectionately, Strom Thurmond." But it was clear that it had come from the man himself, not some staff letter writer. To me, this letting down of his guard was proof that the end was near. Sometimes, in blustery moments, my father would boast that he was going to live to be 120. He didn't say that now. I was 74 myself and retired from teaching. I couldn't believe where the time had gone. He asked the pro forma questions about my children, though he still never would refer to them as his grandchildren. Ronald, in whom my father took special pride in sending through medical school, had settled in Seattle, where he had become a successful emergency room physician. He had married and divorced and was remarried. His first wife was the daughter of one of the Tuskegee Airmen, the famous black flying squad during World War II. His second wife was white. Ronald had been our family's Moses in leading the way to the cool, green, and racially harmonious Pacific Northwest. Julius moved there and went to work as a bus operator for the Metropolitan Transit Authority. As I said, he loved to drive even as a teenager. Then Monica, who was so high-energy that she had run her own karate studio while working at the Bank of America as a teenager, moved there and became the director of a battered women's shelter, Polly's Healing Center, and an accomplished fundraiser for worthy causes. Only Wanda remained with me in Los Angeles. Another highly motivated businesswoman, she had founded her own consulting business in information technology, Ocean Crest Technologies, and it was doing very well. All my children had their own children, and I'd loved the whole big bunch. Since so many of them are in the Washington State area, I have been tempted to move up there, which is about as different from the South, from South Carolina, as a place can be. I marveled to my father that I had 13 grandchildren, by implication, his great-grandchildren, whom he had never met. If only he had said, "Bring them all down to Edgefield. Let's have a real family reunion while I'm still on this earth." Instead, he told me to fry things, if I had to fry at all, in canola oil, which was lowest in saturated fat, and to be sure, to add fiber to my diet. He offered me a large jar of Metamucil from his still overflowing medicine cabinet behind his desk. I told him I had plenty. Now that the Soviet Union had imploded and the Cold War was over, my father didn't have the communists to rail at as his enemy number one. Nevertheless, even at our last visit, he went on about military preparedness and about how many enemies America had in the world and how vigilant the country needed to be. "There are still communists," he warned, "the Chinese, the Arabs, and they're out to get us." But at this point in his career, as the longest-serving senator in American history, he was more tuned in to the micro than the macro view of politics. He wanted to help South Carolinians, whether that meant getting an appointment to West Point or helping them defend an IRS audit or sending them funeral condolences. Strom Thurmond was a man of the people, his people. When I was with him, his aides would be buzzing in and out with little favors for the little people. "Do you need anything, Essie Mae?" He would invariably ask me at the end of our visit. "No, thank you, sir," I'd say, "it's all taken care of." I never thought I wouldn't see him again. Just before I had last visited him, he had made a big show of citing his health regimen and volunteering to backup astronaut Senator John Glenn on the space shuttle. He led the vote to impeach President Clinton in the Monica Lewinsky affair, with his critics suggesting that Senator Thurmond, who had reportedly groped his fair share of staffers and even female senators, should not be casting stones. But my father's flirting days were over. The death of his beloved sister Gertrude, still a spinster, in 2000 seemed to rattle him. When he collapsed on the floor of the Senate, I called him with great concern. He assured me it was nothing, just too hot, and reminded me of his 24-hour filibuster on that same floor. "I'm not gonna disgrace myself by dying there," he said, concerned for his image until the end. After a few more blackouts, however, my father, unable to live alone as he preferred, moved into a suite at Walter Reed Army Hospital and was chauffeured back and forth to the Senate by male nurses. In 2002, after his gala 100th birthday celebration, he finally retired from the Senate with great fanfare. Alluding to my father's legend as a ladies' man, a Marilyn Monroe impersonator sang "Happy Birthday", just as the real Marilyn had sung to JFK. "I love you all," he told his colleagues in his farewell address, "especially your wives." This was when Senate Majority Leader Trent Lott of Mississippi put his foot in his Republican mouth by saying of my father's 1948 Dixiecrack campaign, "We're proud of it, and if the rest of the country had followed our lead, we wouldn't have had all these problems over all these years either." My father's name was still a buzzword for white supremacy, particularly in connection to his rabid presidential bid, and Democrats came after Lott's hide, forcing him to resign. When I moved back to Edgefield in early 2003, I accepted the fact that my father was coming home to die. A special suite was created for him at Edgefield County Hospital. He was driven around on occasion to wave at the constituents whom he loved and who loved him back. I called him once there, but I'm not sure he knew who I was. I might have come to visit had I thought the controversy surrounding my presence would not have disturbed his peace. There was one more burst of fanfare in June of that year when his daughter Julie presented him with what the press called his first grandchild. Once more, my feelings were hurt, but that was the name of the game we had been playing for the last six decades. On June 26, 2003, my father passed away. The leaders of the country paid their respects at Columbia, where his new statue stood in a place of honor in front of the Capitol, the very building General Sherman once tried to burn to the ground. Then my father was taken to the family plot in Edgefield's Willowbrook Cemetery and laid to rest next to his daughter Nancy. Two flags, American and Confederate, stood proudly in equal stature above his grave. Those two flags waving in death were the story of Strom Thur- Those two flags waving in death were the story of Strom Thurmond's life. I tried to fill at peace with the passing of my father, but I couldn't. If life was a game, then Strom Thurmond had won it, big time. He lived one hundred years with almost perfect health. He had enormous success, wielded inestimable power, and served his country with great honor, both at war and peace. He had beautiful wives, beautiful children, a beautiful life, as well as a prominent place in history. Why was I so unsettled, so discontent? It was because he and I had never really made our peace. Yes, he had changed and so had the world, but he and I had never so much as sat down together for a meal. We had never said "I love you" to each other. We had never confronted the reality of our relationship. Too much remained unsaid. I was so grateful just to have a father that I had never been brave enough to risk losing him by rocking the boat. Now I was seventy-eight years old. This was no time to start rocking. My daughter Wanda refused to let me off the confrontation hook. She became my gadfly. "He's gone now," she said, "what have you got to lose?" She beseeched me to consider writing a book. Astute businesswoman that I had raised, Wanda also brought up the issue of my father's estate, which still felt unmentionable to me. "It's probably worth millions, if not tens or hundreds of millions," Wanda said. "Think of the real estate he must own." I did, though I didn't want to. I remembered my father's deep interest in real estate, how he was fascinated with the details of valuation, his expertise in those eminent domain cases that surely made him one of the top real estate attorneys in the South. How proud he was of me when I bought my home, how he went through the details of my mortgage to make sure I was getting the very best deal. "Just hold on to it, no matter what you do. Property is the best way to get rich in this country. Just buy and hold. You sell your children before you sell your land," I remember him joking, a joke that hit close to home. "A hundred years," Wanda went on, "that's a lot of time to accumulate property. Think of what it must be worth. Why shouldn't we get part of it? Shouldn't we be heirs too?" "Not if he doesn't want us to be," I answered, trying to defend the late senator and thinking of the conservatives and thinking of the conservatism and strict construction of his idol, John C. Calhoun. A man could leave his money to whomever he wanted. "That's the point, Mama," Wanda would not relent. "I'm sure he wanted, he just couldn't, not the way things are down there. You may have rights you don't even know about." I didn't really want to know. There had been all these lawsuits in the papers about blacks seeking reparations for slavery, about Jews seeking stolen art from the Nazis. They were all noble causes, but they seemed like endless, impossible journeys. The last thing I wanted in my life were lawsuits and publicity. I remembered how uncomfortable, how queasy I felt whenever journalists had come snooping around. I wanted to get on with the rest of my life, to live quietly, to avoid the storm. Wanda wouldn't let me. "It's too big to let go, Mama. You owe it to yourself, you owe it to us, you owe it to your country." "Don't get so dramatic, honey." "This is dramatic," Wanda insisted. While I was trying to make believe that this sense of unfinished business would pass over time, Wanda refused to let sleeping dogs lie. She began consulting Los Angeles lawyers about the possibilities of a challenge to the Thurmond will. Of course, she didn't mention who the descendant was, attorney-client privilege notwithstanding. That would have been too hot for most lawyers to touch. Even with the anonymity, none of the lawyers she consulted would take the case on contingency. Lawyers are notoriously risk averse, and speculative will contests regarding illegitimate children are particularly risky. Then, through a high school friend, Keith Webster, she was introduced to a local lawyer named Frank K. Wheaton, who struck her as far more creative than all the stuffier lawyers she had met with. Frank was creative because he was in the entertainment business. He had been a broadcaster, an actor himself, before going to law school. He had represented such sports heroes as Lakers forward James Worthy and Olympic runners Florence Griffin, Flo Joe Joyner, and Bob Beaman. He also had important white clients like my comedy hero Milton Berle. Much more importantly, he was willing to take the case on a contingency. That made me instantly suspicious when Wanda told me she had found the right man. "Just meet him," she begged me, to explore possibilities and nothing more. If I decided I didn't want to go forward, Frank Wheaton was the one lawyer that we could trust to forever hold his peace. What sold me on Frank Wheaton was his voice, a deep, reassuring baritone that inspired not only confidence but hope. It was a preacher's voice, minus the fire and brimstone. In fact, in his acting days, Frank had made a good living doing voice-overs in many national commercials. I had always been a goner for voices, though this time I got the sense that the substance matched the sound. Frank was a poor, self-made kid from Compton, one of the toughest black neighborhoods in Los Angeles. He was both a believer in and an example of the American dream. And after he heard me reluctantly tell my story, he asserted that I was a far bigger example, the best he had ever seen. Like Wanda, he urged me to tell my story, which he guaranteed would be an inspiration to blacks and whites alike. He felt if anyone could help bridge America's racial divide, I could. I laughed and told him he was quite a salesman. He laughed back, then he turned serious and told me how hard a case we would have in challenging the Thurmond will. The Thurmond family would surely deny Strom Thurmond's paternity of me. I would have to undergo DNA genetic testing, even if science proved to be on my side, the law was not. South Carolina had no automatic right of inheritance for children, as some states do. Just as I had thought, South Carolina was pure lazy affair on what a person could do with his estate. "Like states' rights," I observed, writing the whole matter off as a lost cause. "What about human rights?" Frank Wheaton replied. He felt the state law could be challenged, just like Plessy versus Ferguson had been challenged and overturned by Brown versus Board of Education. Leaving me out of his will, just like leaving me out of his life, had been a massive injustice, Frank asserted. He was willing to go out on the shakiest of limbs to challenge it, but he couldn't do it without me. "I had to be prepared to weather a violent storm and the perilous journey," he warned me, "before we could reach the promised land." It took me a week to decide, but I didn't want to end my life carrying this secret to my grave. I wasn't a Black Joan of Arc, as Frank was trying to inspire me to be, but maybe I could help someone by telling my tale. "The truth shall set you free," and I wanted to die a free person. In August two thousand and three, we crossed the Rubicon. Frank realized he would be playing the Black David to the White Goliath of the Southern legal establishment. Luckily, he was associated with the very WASP-y Pasadena law firm, Scolinos, Sheldon, and Neville. Also in our corner was Harry Scolinos, the senior partner of the firm, who had been stationed in the military in South Carolina and was intrigued rather than terrified, as most lawyers would be, by the prospect of taking on the sacred cow of Dixie. He therefore allowed Frank to correspond on the firm's letterhead, which would have the effect of showing a cross to the vampires of the South Carolina bar and winning the respect and courtesy for Frank that he might not have found as a sole black practitioner. Armed with white armor, Frank wrote to my half-brother Strom Thurmond Junior, whom our father had appointed at twenty-eight to be United States Attorney for South Carolina in two thousand and one, making him the youngest man ever to hold the post as the federal government's top gun in the state. Some locals had cried nepotism, but not too loudly. Such was my father's absolute power on his home turf. At first, Frank got no reply. A month later, he received a terse letter from the Thurmond family lawyer, J. Mark Taylor, telling Frank, in not so many words, to drop dead. Taylor wrote that the family was by no means certain of the paternity issue, that the estate had a value of only two hundred thousand dollars, and that in any event, Essie Mae Washington Williams was not provided for, case closed. But not for Frank, who saw the fact that the Thurmonds were not vehemently denying my assertion that I was their sibling as a major crack of the door. That was good news, if grasping at such straws was good. The bad news was that the South Carolina statute of limitations on challenges to estates over paternity issues was a mere six months. Furthermore, all such claims had to go before the Family Tribunal in Aiken County, where my father's will was registered. And still further, the Family Tribunal in Aiken was a panel of arbiters who didn't have to be lawyers. This was a vastly complex matter, and these locals weren't about to challenge the sanctified memory and racial purity of the man they regarded as their savior. "It's worse than a kangaroo court," Frank told us glumly. The kid from Compton was not a quitter, but these were times that would try any lawyer's soul, assuming the lawyer had one. Accepting the necessity of local counsel to sort through the arcana of Palmetto jurisprudence, Frank contacted no fewer than twelve prominent black lawyers, all of whom politely turned him down. This was a hornet's nest no one wanted to stir up. Finally, my alma mater, South Carolina State, came to the rescue. The college's general counsel was a young man named Glenn Walters, who had graduated from State and then from the prestigious University of Virginia Law School, founded by Thomas Jefferson, who had his own secret romance with his slave Sally Hemmings. Walters loved the case, especially because I was a state girl. He was too young to be afraid of my father's long shadow. He relished the challenge of changing the laws of inheritance for the benefit of secret children. Even with Glenn's assistance, the Thurmond lawyer, J. Mark Taylor, would not budge, nor would he even respond. As months went by and the time of the statute of limitations ticked down towards its December expiration, Frank Wheaton knew desperate measures were necessary. He had to take off his lawyer's hat and put on his Hollywood director's visor. It had to be showtime. Frank planned a media campaign and began to organize a press conference at which I would come out. To that end, he located Marilyn Thompson, the Washington Post writer, who had done the nineteen ninety-two article as well as the co-author of the unauthorized Thurmond biography. She had been obsessed with the story for nearly two decades. He offered her an exclusive in return for front-page coverage in The Post. It was arranged that the story would indeed appear in what was known as The Post's Bulldog Edition, which was the Saturday night issue of Sunday's paper of December fourteen. For this dogged reporter, whom I had done my best to avoid, this was the scoop of a lifetime. I did speak to her, though I was still very guarded and had a lifetime of caution. I'm not sure I helped her very much, but it was enough for a bombshell. Aside from that interview, Frank kept me sequestered from everyone. He knew the value of the element of surprise. He also knew the power of the press, which descended on his home the minute the contents of the upcoming Post story leaked out. Fox News immediately assembled a panel of separately talking heads, including Frank himself, Nancy Thurmond, and Armstrong Williams, a prominent black Washington DC columnist who had grown very close to my father during his transformation into the Friend of Black South Carolina in the nineteen seventies. Nancy Thurmond said she knew absolutely nothing about me, which I don't doubt was the truth. My father was a master of secrecy. But Armstrong Williams broke the tie, saying he fully believed what Frank Wheaton was asserting, that Strom Thurmond was my father. CBS called immediately. I was real. Dan Rather wanted me on Sixty Minutes, the television equivalent of my father's cover of Time. Rather was planning to fly right out. Frank and my family were all very excited. Still, in a matter of days, the statute of limitations was going to expire. What good was all this posturing if the Thurmonds continued to stonewall? "They won't stonewall Sixty Minutes," Frank assured us. "The only thing that could knock us off the air is if they find Saddam Hussein." That very day they captured Saddam Hussein, I have never seen such a depressed group of people as we were. The game was over, lost on a freak shot at the last second. A few hours later, one of the CBS producers called. The two producers, Mary Mapes and Dana Robertson, had been relentless. Mary told Frank that Dan Rather still wanted me. "I meant more to him and to America than Saddam Hussein," she told Frank. "The only catch was that Dan couldn't fly to California. Could we come to New York the next day?" And so we went. The next day, just before the limo picked Frank up for the airport, he got a call from the Thurmonds' lawyer, J. Mark Taylor. Rushing, Frank told Taylor he had no time, but Taylor insisted he listen to the statement about to be released to the media by Strom Thurmond Junior. Taylor read from the statement, and all Frank remembered before dropping to his knees to say, "God and Essie Mae," as he had said, was that, "The Thurmond family wishes to acknowledge the genetic heritage of Essie Mae Washington Williams." I was sitting in an airport coffee bar when Frank came back in tears. I first thought it was more bad news until I saw him smiling through. They were tears of joy. He embraced all of us, me, Wanda, my grandson Jason, and we all thanked God for his infinite kindness. I would say relief, more than anything else, was my immediate dominant emotion. I sat there stunned for a long time. Despite all the noise of the terminal, all the announcements, I was in a zone of blissful silence. I was totally relaxed, totally loose, almost floating. After a lifetime of denial, the truth was out, and I was free. The Thurmonds were publicly acknowledging me as their blood relation. My history could now become American history. I would have liked to see a plaque at that coffee counter as the spot where Essie Mae Washington Williams was released. The next twenty-four hours were a blur of airlines and terminals. Five of us flew close country to New York. There was Frank, myself, Wanda, Jason, and Frank's children, friend Van Adams. Van was trained as a chiropractor and helped me with warm, soothing massages throughout the five tense days in New York. The next day, as Frank handled the press, I remained sequestered at the hotel until I was taken to the CBS studio to meet Dan Rather. Mr. Rather took Southern hospitality to a new level. He couldn't have been more supportive. From here, it was back on the plane. I would have loved to see the city, but all we saw was the studio and the inside of black-windowed limousines to and from the airport. There were no flights to Columbia, so we had to fly to Charlotte, and be driven south to Columbia. to Columbia to be on time for our momentous press conference. Glenn Walters had arranged a mini-army of twelve burly bodyguards to protect us from irate Klansmen or other white supremacy types. Frank, ever the showman, had planned to hold a conference in front of my father's statue at the Capitol, the statue that listed the names of his four children by Nancy, but not mine. But that would change now, that and a lot of other things. I knew change was coming, but it was getting near winter in Columbia, and the weather was cold and blustery, and rain was threatening. So Frank, at the last moment, changed the venue to the grand ballroom of Columbia's grandest hotel, the Adams Mark. There were four hundred seats, and the next morning, all of them were filled with press from around the world. There were countless television trucks, creating a monumental traffic jam. If ever there were a media event, this was it. Frank asked me if I was nervous, and my honest answer was that I was not. A great weight had been lifted. The truth had set me free. So after an eloquent introduction by Frank, I made the long march from the back of the ballroom to the raised podium. It was like winning an Academy Award with the press in as big a frenzy. But I was ready. I talked from the heart. I hope that my husband Julius heard me and that my father heard me as well. There were a lot of tears in that audience, black tears and white tears. I felt it was a wonderful moment for South Carolina. It was bigger than I would ever have imagined. After I made it through my speech, the crowd roared, and there were countless dozens of people standing, waving and crying. Afterward, Frank conducted a careful question-and-answer session with the national and world press that might have gone on for hours, had the CBS stringer not signaled to bring the conference to an end. Instead of leaving the back way through the security exit we had planned, Frank decided I should walk back to our suite through the main entrance of the lobby. It was as if the waters were parting. I felt so much love. Frank told me he encountered two women, who he was certain were Thurmonds, sobbing uncontrollably. You're relatives, aren't you? He asked them. They didn't answer, but he could tell. They were there to wish me well, even if they couldn't say it. Silence tended to run in the family. In a way, my life began at seventy-eight. At least my life is who I really was, without the subterfuges of the previous sixty-five years. I may have called it closure, but it was much more like an opening, a very grand opening. I was on many television shows, so many that children stopped me on the street and asked me for my autograph. I have developed a friendship with Nancy Thurmond. It's strange to call someone my stepmother who was decades younger than I, but that's what she is. As mothers and as Thurmonds, we have much more in common than might meet the eye. We both love to talk, and we talk about everything. We often speak on the phone, and I try to see her whenever I go back to South Carolina, which has been frequent. I have had the dinner with Strom Thurmond Jr. that I always longed to have with his father. We didn't talk politics or race at all, just family, his family and my family, which is now our family. He's a fine young man, as my father might have said. I've also had lunch with my half-brother Paul, and I'm looking forward to seeing my half-sister Julie. I know that more and deeper dialogue will follow as we get to know each other. The key thing here is that the great divide has been bridged. Meanwhile, the South Carolina Legislature voted to add my name to my father's statue, albeit at the bottom rather than the top of the list of his children. Whatever the placement, I'm honored to be there. As for the estate, Frank Wheaton and Glenn Walters are still on the case, which will surely profit from the dialogue that has come to take place with the family. One of my greatest honors was to have been granted an honorary doctorate by South Carolina State for my thirty years of teaching and guiding students at graduation ceremonies in May two thousand and four. I received a standing ovation at the school's new football stadium. I couldn't help but think of the straight hair requirement back at Coatesville that kept me from being a cheerleader and made me make the turn that found me accepting the cheers of thousands. I also visited Charleston for the first time. I spoke at a scholarship fund charity event at the once whites-only and still very exclusive Francis Marion Hotel on State Street. I also spoke at an all-black Baptist church in North Charleston, where the mayor presented me with the key to the city. That was the dichotomy of Charleston. That was the dichotomy of my life. I visited Edgefield and Aiken escorted by my father's dear friend, Bettis Ransford. A true pillar of that community, Mr. Ransford, a dedicated historical preservationist, took me to visit the building that housed the law office where I first met my father. We also took a wonderful tour of my father's birthplace, warmly welcomed by the young family that has bought the Great White Mansion and lovingly preserved it as a living shrine to the boyhood of Edgefield's favorite son. We toured Old Buncombe, where my mother and her family grew up. It hadn't changed much since I first visited there in the early nineteen forties. And then we crossed the big road where all those huge plantation houses still stand to visit my father's grave in Willowbrook Cemetery, a green and serene slice of heaven, where over Strom Thurmond's resting place, the American and Confederate flags continue to flutter softly and peacefully together in the gentle southern breezes. I had lived my life as an African-American. Now things had changed. Not that I wanted to live the rest of my life as a white person. I wanted to live out my days as an American, with all the delicious complexity that term has come to apply. My visit to Charleston, our most historic city, has also streaked my thirst for history. To that end, I have applied for membership in both the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, NSDAR, and the United Daughters of the Confederacy, UDC, to which I am entitled to join through my father's lineage. I wanted to join the NSDAR. I was inspired by the efforts of the Black Patriots Foundation to address its dismay that written history had marginalized black involvement during the colonies' struggle for independence against England. In the nineteen eighties, the visionaries behind this foundation commenced the lawsuit against the NSDAR that ultimately compelled it to identify and honor the thousands of black soldiers who had fought for America's freedom in the revolution. I would be honored to join the NSDAR to encourage the rich dialogue between blacks and whites that, without participation of these descendants of all our country's patriots, would otherwise not take place. As for the UDC, many people have raised the question of how a black person could consider joining a society that honors a past of racism. The answers are much more complex than the questions. First of all, the United Daughters of the Confederacy is anything but a racist cabal of ancestors of slave owners. It is not the Simon Legree Society. The Confederacy was composed of many great Americans, Judah P. Benjamin, Robert E. Lee, Lucius Lamar, Wade Hampton. These were hardly Klansmen. Just as the Civil War was hardly a battle to the death over slavery alone. There were many black slave owners as well, many free people of color, who supported the Confederacy. There were also slaves who fought and died for the Confederacy. Were they forced by their masters, or were they loyal to their masters' cause? Or were there other compelling reasons that led them to fight and die in this terrible way? I wanted to join the UDC to find the answers, to learn more about this key conflict that defined America and continues to define us. I've lived my life believing that knowledge was power and certainly empowering. I want all the knowledge I can get, and I want my children and my grandchildren to connect to all aspects of their heritage, whether patriot or politician, slave or slave owners. The past and all of its lessons must not be denied. Second, many of those who decry my joining the UDC tend to categorize me as a black person. They may make the more subtle argument that anyone who's lived through and supported the civil rights movement should never join any organization associated with abridgement of those rights. To them, the Confederacy, as well as its flag, are all old times in Dixie that should be forgotten. But what really bothers these critics is that a black person would consider honoring the Confederacy that perpetuated the enslavement of his or her ancestors. Such labeling is as racist in its own way as the Confederacy itself. I am every bit as white as I am black, and it is my full intention to drink the nectar of both goblets. History is complex, and mine is as complex as it gets. That's why I want to join these organizations, to explore and try to comprehend all the fascinating complexities, tragic as well as joyous, of my life and of my country. In my past lives, as defined by my genealogy, I was a slave and I was a master. I was black and I was white. I was a Roosevelt progressive and I was a Dixie grad. I was for Kennedy and I was for Nixon. I was the glorious president of the South and I was a lowly maid in Edgefield. Above all, I transcended all these internal contradictions to become a real person, my own person, a simple person who loves America as the wonderful place that has allowed me to discover and to be exactly who I am. Acknowledgements. One of the great joys in excavating a life is the wonderful cast of characters you meet in The Big Dig. I would like to single out the following very special individuals for their time, their insights, and for their unforgettable Southern hospitality. Jack Bass, Barry Bishop, Thurmond Bishop, Daniel I.A. Cohen, Butler Derrick, Carrie Lee Early, Bruce Elred, Gordon Farmer, Tex Fuller, May Outscreen, Donna Kendall, Honorary Matthew Perry, Bettis Ransford, Catherine Ray, Peg Rivers, Deborah Rosen, Tom Tisdale, Gina and Jay Waddell, and the staffs of the Strom Thurmond Collection at Clemson University and the South Carolina Historical Society in Charleston. Special thanks to Bridie Clark for her devotion to this project and her editorial inspirations, to Robert Edmonds for his invariably sage counsel, and to Peter Miller, whose unique fusion of zeal and wheel takes agenting to a different level and a better place. Above all, I must thank Frank K. Wheaton, the kid from Compton, without whom this book would never have come to pass. His intelligence, humor, and compassion, combined with his utterly fearless commitment to justice, have been essential in securing Essie Mae Washington Williams' place in history and in the hearts of this country. William Stadium, Santa Monica, October sixth, two thousand and four. About the authors. Essie Mae Washington Williams worked as a teacher in the Los Angeles School District for twenty-seven years. The mother of four children, grandmother of thirteen, and great-grandmother of four, she lives in Los Angeles. William Stadium is the co-author and international bestseller of Mr. S., My Life with Frank Sinatra, Lullaby and Goodnight, and Marilyn Monroe Confidential, and the author of A Class by Themselves: The Untold Story of the Great Southern Families.
Context of white supremacy. How interesting. He's also written about Frank Sinatra, who had the same fetish. Child rape, really. I was gonna call it something else. I was gonna say young girls, but I mean, really, Mia Farrow was seventeen and he was approaching fifty. Like I said, I was searching. I was gonna say fetish for young girls, but that's child rape. Context of white supremacy. If that is not, let me know. If there's a more accurate term for what that is, let me know. We are all done. Another one bites the dust. Love it when we can finish a book on the cows. We don't even have a second audio seg. Or we do have another segment, but the book is totally done. So folks have concluding thoughts, major takeaways. Our narrator, Bravo, thank you for awesome professional work. I think it was just amazing to have a female voicing Essie Mae Washington's story, and then she did such a just superb job. Our black female narrator in South Florida. And because she invested her time and talents to narrate, Gus T. was relieved of those duties. I was able to go and do some research. That's how we got the program at the beginning of the week. No crooked death. The lynching of Zachariah Walker. That's exactly how this book started. I was wrong. I thought she was gonna mention Zachariah Walker one more time before the book ended, but she did not. But I mean, hey, she mentioned him many, many, many times, all the way throughout. The worthless negro from Virginia, Zachariah Walker. But that's how we got Dr. Downey on the program. This past Monday, I emailed Mr. Stadium to see if we can get him on the program. He is the white ghost author of this book, so maybe we'll see if we can talk to him. And Marilyn Thompson, she co-authored the biography Old Strom. She was mentioned directly and all that, her report in helping get Essie Mae's story out. We have been in contact, so we'll see if we can get her on the program as well. I learned a ton reading this book. I'm so glad that I chose it. I'll give one article and then we'll get to callers. The number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. V code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. V code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. So this is one report, and this is, I had free time, so I was able to go and research. Who was Zachariah Walker? Let's see what was in the papers, what they were reporting about Essie Mae. And again, how common was it that, hey, Carrie Butler, Essie Mae's mother, she was fifteen? This is also child rape, what we would call this. So this report, this is from the New York Times, December twenty, two thousand and three, so right after Strom Thurmond, same year that he passes away. Essie Mae says, hey, let's make this public. So this is Thurmond family struggles with difficult truth. Now check this out. After Essie Mae Washington Williams told the world this week that she was Strom Thurmond's mixed-race daughter, she walked away completely free of a burden she had borne privately for decades. Now members of Mr. Thurmond's sprawling family, a well-connected dynasty in South Carolina, say they are the ones struggling. The sudden, very public arrival of Miss Washington Williams to the family has stirred a mix of frustration, curiosity, discomfort, and shame. Several of the relatives of the late Mr. Thurmond said today, speaking about the news for the first time. Mary T. Tompkins Freeman, a niece of the late senator who died at a hundred in June, said Miss Washington Williams' announcement was like a blight on the family. Like others, Miss Freeman heard rumors for years that her uncle, a legendary politician in the South who rose to fame as a fiery segregationist, not racist, had fathered a child with a black maid child, but she never had to confront the truth, not like this. But she never had to confront the truth, not like this. I went to a church meeting the other day and all these people came up to me and you could tell they didn't know what to say, Ms. Freeman said. For the first time in my life, I felt shame. Now I just wanna pause now. Again, Strom Thurmond at sixty-six. Married a twenty-two-year-old. And had a reputation. For being lecherous with females. And this is the first time that you felt shame. We will continue. Ms. Freeman also said. That had the secret daughter been white, it would be a whole other situation. Because the public criticism would not have been as harsh. Strom rose to such stature, you just wonder how in the world this could have gone on, said Ms. Freeman, sixty-four, a retired teacher in Lugoff, South Carolina. My family always had help. Around the house, but it just seems Strom would have been above that. James Bishop, a nephew, said the publicity had been embarrassing and awkward. Say, the man's dead and he can't speak for himself, said Mr. Bishop, fifty-nine, a horticulturalist in Marietta, Georgia. I don't know why this lady is doing this. Mr. Bishop's daughter, Robin Bishop, twenty-five, an interior designer in Washington, said the worst part was jokes on late night television. It's been really hard this week, said Ms. Bishop, who once worked as a senate page for Mr. Thurmond. He likes those young ones. You have to turn on the TV and there are jokes about him and you're still grieving. I just hope this woman is coming out for the right reasons. Ms. Washington Williams, a seventy-eight-year-old retired teacher living in Los Angeles, said she finally broke her silence because she wanted her children to know the truth. Is that the right reason? On Friday, when asked what she thought of relatives who were embarrassed by her, Ms. Washington Williams said, well, that's just too bad. We'll pray for them. Christian thing to do. Barry Bishop, fifty-seven, a plastic surgeon in Greenville, South Carolina and the son of one of Strom Thurmond's twin sisters, said he was upset by the way the truth came out. For something to be done so publicly and with all the media circus animals at the circus, you know. Well, we're just not comfortable dealing with things in that way, Dr. Bishop said. There should have been a private conversation and a meeting. I thought we heard some of that. Still, he praised the way Ms. Washington Williams had handled herself, especially when asked about her father. Ms. Washington Williams said he was not a racist in his heart. She defended him and that gives us all a warm feeling. Dr. Bishop. Scroll in paper, you know. Dr. Bishop said. Ellen Center, a niece of Mr. Thurmond, also praised Ms. Washington Williams' handling of her announcement after remaining silent for so long. S E May Washington Williams' humble spirit and kind nature has made it easier for us to bear this news, said Ms. Center, fifty-eight, a teacher in Columbia. But it was hard when I first heard it because it was surprising to me that my uncle had any sort of illegitimate child, black or white. Now again, sixty-six, twenty-two. The Thurmond family, a network across South Carolina of well-placed nepotism, lawyers, doctors and public officials, say the announcement will not taint. The image of their beloved patriarch and several family members acknowledged that how they deal with the news will affect not only Mr. Thurmond's legacy, but also political prospects of his descendants, several family members said. The Thurmans are the closest things we got to royalty, said Lee Bandy, a longtime columnist for the state newspaper. The stakes seem highest for Mr. Thurmond's eldest son and namesake, J Strom Thurmond Junior, thirty-one, the United States Attorney for South Carolina, who is thought to aspire to higher office nepotism. On Monday, two days after the news broke about Ms. Washington Williams, Ms. Thurmond issued, Mr. Thurmond issued a statement for the family acknowledging her claim to her heritage and indicating he would like to meet her. Ms. Washington Williams said she had met some members of the family this week, but she declined to say who because they asked her not to disclose their identities. Mr. Thurmond Junior did not return calls. Some people have praised his quick response, others say he had no choice. It's what they had to do, said Congressman James E Claveran, Democrat of South Carolina. She had DNA proof, even so, I applaud them, but mostly I applaud their attorney. The statement he put together was a work of artful vagueness. The Thurmond's lawyer, J Mark Taylor of Columbia, did not return several phone calls. Ms. Freeman said she had talked to family members who said the younger Mr. Thurmond and Mr. Taylor had worked very carefully on that statement, thinking of the road ahead. Mr. Thurmond Junior, known as Lowstrom and Stromboli, has a reputation as a dogged worker determined to prove himself as his own man. He once took a summer job at an ecology laboratory cleaning out duck cages. But in two thousand and one, he was appointed to the post of United States Attorney despite complaints of nepotism and the fact that he had only three years of legal experience. This week, family members said he had stepped up to be the voice of the Thurmond family because he was the namesake and the eldest of the Thurmond children raised, not including Ms. Washington Williams. The Senator married twice, both times to beauty queens and fathered four children when he was in his sixties and seventies. They don't include the ages. Political observers say that for the Thurmond family, this moment, however painful, has turned into an opportunity. I think Strom Thurmond Junior has scored points, especially in the black community. Ooh, I could gag because he's not sweeping the family issue under the carpet, said Donald P Alessi, a professor of political science at Thurmond University in Greenville. He's well positioned now to do whatever he wants, Professor Alessi said, and most people knew about Strom's other daughter anyway. Well, if that's the case, what's all this hubbub about? For decades, rumors swirled in South Carolina. That's so funny. That's so funny cuz you know, but this came out in two thousand and three, so swirling was already in the vernacular as, oh, some old, you know. Anyway, rumors swirled in South Carolina that Mr. Thurmond, who had once declared that all the bayonets of the army cannot force the Negro into our homes, had fathered a mixed-race child with a teenage black maid when he was twenty-two. Ms. Freeman said she was not sure if she was ready to meet Ms. Washington Williams, who has said she wants to connect with as many members of the family as possible. If I do, I'm not going to go with open. Live, I can't live, I can't live. Woo, I'm sorry. You would think none of this would be, you know, oh, I can't believe she's. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me get it together and that was almost the last sentence too. Almost got through it being semi-professional. Here we go. Ms. Freeman said she was not sure if she was ready to meet Ms. Williams, Ms. Washington Williams, who has said she wants to connect with as many members of the family as possible. If I do, I'm not going to go with open arms, Ms. Freeman said. It's too much to accept right now. Can't live. But she added, there's no doubt about the family resemblance. Duh, I mean, really, you don't even need a DNA test. All you'd have to do is see her and go, oh, yeah, yeah, never mind, yeah. Strom was out raping, yeah, yeah, he did that. Anyway, let's, let's, you're still not getting any money, but yeah, she, yeah, yeah, he did that. Anywho, that's what I mean. The whole reason we read this book. J Russell Hawkins, you're a white history professor with a doctorate? And you get paid to write a book and have a whole staff edit and you don't know? Not only is this not mentioned at all, like you don't even include in the book that, oh, yeah, all this talk about raping Negroes and raping Negroes and raping Negroes and, oh, yeah. He did rape that teenager. You can't include that at all and you give some lame judge. J Russell Hawkins, you, Dr. Downey, J, when they say, he was a master at keeping secrets, no, 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 no. J Strom Thurmond was a master liar. I played Pam at the beginning, Pamela Evans Harris, not forgotten. Stop keeping white people's secrets, man. She said, that's a tough one. Neely Fuller Junior talked about that, Renefia Tate, Pieces of a Puzzle. Secretsextalk.com website for the book. Stop Keeping White People's Secrets, that's a big one. Pam talked, she said, that hurt her so bad when she heard Mr. Fuller talk about that, she turned off the sound. It was so painful keeping white people's secrets. That was the very first time Pam was a guest on the program, two oh one oh. Number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound press star six one. If you would like to participate. We'll see what folks have to say. Last audio segment, book in general, and then I'll get to some of my notes as well. Oh, and lots of listeners wrote in notes as well, so we'll get some of the callers. I'll give my notes and we'll get listeners who wrote in as well. Let's see, folks who dialed in with a hand up and again, thanks to our narrator Bravo. Excellent job. Thank you for freeing up Gus T's time and energy as well. Folks who dialed in with a hand up, if you have commentary to share, proceed.
Greetings, everyone.
Retired firefighter in Florida. Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, uh, the, uh, the reader was so excellent. If I ever hear the real person's voice, I am never gonna get over it. And I'm gonna deny the real person's voice because she did such a good job. Uh, you know, my mind is almost confused on the idea of hearing the real S E May. Because, uh, the, the, uh, reader did such a great job, uh, uh, on how she, uh, used her voice, even, even hearing the voice of, of, uh, the, uh, the principal person. Uh, Strom Thurmond, uh, that's gonna bother me because in my mind, I can only think of the way that the, the reader. Uh, used her voice to become S E May and, and, uh, Thurmond. And, uh, you know, so she did a very great job, but, uh. Uh, S E May, uh, Ms. S E May, uh, victim of racism, white supremacy, uh, is probably is an excellent example. Of the results of a. Uh. Under, of a sexual, uh, uh, relationship between a white person and a non-white person under the global system of racism, white supremacy. Uh. Just by reading and absorbing the book. It gives you a description and that description, the best, if I could have to put it in one word, is confusion. Confusion on how. And if I have to give her any, uh, good credit on, on her, uh, book. It shows on how confused a non-white person would be. As a result of. A white person having sex with a non-white person. And, uh, to add on, as you repeat over and over. This non-white person was not just a child politically. This person really was a child age-wise on top of it. Uh, you know, so, uh, those are some of the, uh, dominant thoughts that I had all through of listening to, uh, the book read. And once again, uh, like to thank the, uh, the reader for her excellent job that she did. Thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Narrators down there in South Florida where you are, whoopee citrus and orange juice for, for all. Uh, I think the word, well, he said confusion, that would certainly apply synonym for confusion that many of the folks who wrote in, where they have used is, uh, delusional. But they are closely related in terms of not really being accurate or in touch with truth, that which is reality. The other folks who dialed in with a hand up, if we missed you totally, if you have any commentary to share on, uh, dear Senator S E May Washington Williams, proceed.
May I be heard?
Uh, yes, sir, if you could speak up a tad.
Uh, how about now, Gus?
Great.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for taking my call and greetings, everybody on the line and listeners, um. Uh. She, um, made a comment about Thomas Jefferson's, I guess, quote-unquote romance with Sally Hemings. I just, uh, wrote not romance, ran, not romance, child rape. Um, the attorney Frank K Wheaton. Um, he, uh, when he decided to put on his, um, a show, I believe, that was the term that was used to reveal, um, S E May Williams' relation to Strom Thurmond. Um, uh, that made me think of Mr. Fuller saying, learn everything in constructive value, you know, cuz that did help them out, get attention on whatever case. And, um, I also noted that, um, James Wheaton, which is Frank Wheaton's father, was in Sanford and Son. Um. Uh, the part where in the book where they brought up Saddam Hussein and that was the only thing that would kinda, I guess, quote-unquote overshadow, um, her getting the spotlight. Um, I was thinking, was that really a coincidence? Cuz it brings up ideas of how people, um, theorize what happened, really happened with nine eleven. Um. A little part here about where the Strom family, uh, sent a letter acknowledging the, I guess, the genetic, uh, heritage. I just thought that was a tacky way to say it. Um, not saying this is my honor or anything like that, but, you know, what do you expect, um. The other, um, once they got out the, I guess, the town hall meeting, I believe. Uh, there were other, uh, people there, I'm assuming other black people who were waiting and the lawyer said, you, you guys are Thurmans. I believe these are other rape victims. Um. The part about, uh, I guess, when, um, S E May talked to Nancy Thurmond, um, and they said, and. and they said, and she said they had a lot in common, I was thinking, um, uh, I don't know if you were, you know, you guys, she said they talked about everything, I'm not sure if they did, I'm not sure if she talked to her about how old her mother and father was when, uh, she was conceived, Essie Mae. Um, uh, the part about Coatesville, uh, having a straight hair requirement to be a cheerleader, uh, just, you know, more, um, white identification in a system of racism. Um, when she moved, well, I guess when she went to go visit old Buncombe, and things did not change, I wa- was not surprised by that. Um, there is this last part where she, um, spoke about, uh, people, she wanted to, uh, join the, uh, Daughters of Confederacy, um, and it was a part she said, "Not that I wanted to live my life a white person." Um, I was thinking, I don't know, you know, with all the benefits you get, I don't know if you, you know, I'm, I think there's a little confusion there, but, um, uh, that's pretty much all my notes from now. Uh, uh, overall, it, the theme of the book for me will be, um, you know, no sex with white people, um, and, uh, I think Mr. Fuller also said that the, the products of these unions are hopelessly lost, and, and I'll mute my line.
Hopeless, hmm hmm hmm. Context of white supremacy, hmm. Uh, the number is 720-716-7300, decode 564-943-POUND, press star 61 if you would like to participate. Uh, let's see, Bay Area Mom should be with us as well, any other folks, uh, thoughts, analyses? We have one more audio segment, too, we will hear from, uh, they're talking about the products, we will hear from some of Essie Mae's offspring, 'cause I played a segment way, way back earlier in the book where, uh, Ms. Essie Mae, she was speaking at the Strom Thurmond Institute in South Carolina, I believe that's at Clemson University, and her, two, two of her daughters were present, uh, or at least her two daughters, her sons, I don't think, were there, or maybe they didn't, just didn't speak. Anyway, her daughters, they got up to speak, so I'll play the segments, you can hear what they had to share about their experience, and we talked about her daughter, Wanda, with Dr. Dennis B. Downey on Monday. Uh, but, Bay Area Mom, uh, you should be with us as well, thoughts on Dear Senator?
Um, thank you, thank you for taking my call. Greetings to you and everyone on the program. Well, I was thinking, when you were, uh, reading the part about, um, or when they were speaking about, um, uh, her, um, oh dear, um, uh, my brain, they were talking about, um, she was talking about her, her father, he wasn't, um, a racist in his, um, in his, I guess, in his soul, or in his heart, I'm sorry, and, um, just how she really wanted to be accepted by this man, I thought it was, I thought it was sad. Because I think a lot of, uh, people, uh, with that makeup, um, with a white parent, they, they, they really wanna be accepted as white, or acknowledged, uh, by white people, because she also stated that she didn't, you know, she wasn't really interested in being African-American, considered, uh, African-American or black, whatever the terms they're using for us, she just wanted to be American. And when you, you're, uh, you're a product of that kind of, um, union, it's so confusing because even though they say you're black, you would prefer to be accepted as something above black. And then how the family, uh, of course, they weren't gonna, um, receive her, but they, they only, uh, it, it seems like they only, uh, made that announcement to accept her because they didn't want, um, th- his, uh, name kinda tarnished with that. And I was thinking, too, when they mentioned, uh, what is it, Saddam Hussein, it, they probably, the only thing that would, um, uh, prevent that from, her from going on, is if, uh, they ca- captured Saddam Hussein. I like to say that maybe that was why they did that smokescreen. I don't know if they captured her or not, I don't know what really happened, I just, I do remember that, that moment. I wonder if they did that like that on purpose for a distraction, so you'll be focused on Saddam being, um, captured versus her, uh, explosive news, or even with the attorney as well. I, I thought that was, um, interesting, so I wonder about that. I wonder when they create these situations, is it to block out something else? And how they, they added her, they included her, but not really included her. And it seemed like everyone was longing for acceptance, even one of her sons, uh, oh, it must've been the oldest one, so even her, uh, her son that went to medical school, he had a black wife, but he found him a white wife, so I don't know if, uh, the white woman see, uh, saw him out because she knew, you know, whatever, you know, she knew, or, you know, especially his position at the hospital as well. However, sometimes they, they figure out ways to divide and conquer, so separate the union that he had with the black wife and duck, take it over, and sh- now she's in a union with the blackmail and getting all of the rewards. Um, so, that's all I like to say, um, about the, uh, book, it was great, I, I enjoy listening to it. Oh my thing, if I can, since the book is over, her poor husband, oh my goodness, he was so young when he died, and then all that pressure, and she has all this money, they over there struggling, she got saving this money from him, and, oh, I'm not gonna, um, give him, I'm not gonna let him know about this, because he just might say he doesn't want it, even though I wanna give it to him, she didn't even, uh, give him the option to say, "No, I don't want that money," or, or anything, it just, it was a trip, because he, I understand they were in a marriage, but it just seems like she was more committed to g- her da- being her daughter's, her dad's daughter versus her husband's wife. So, that's all I'll say, and I'm not taking on her, I just noticed just all the pressure and stress, he was drinking, he couldn't even go, he couldn't even do what he wanted to do, and then she had the money, but she didn't even tell him, it's like all the secrets, you're hiding stuff in your marriage, it's, I'm never getting married, this stuff's crazy. Okay, thank you for taking my call, I'll mute my line.
Bay Area Mom, much obliged. Mr. Fuller said that, like, hey, that, that marriage stuff is not where it's at in the system of white supremacy, or at least have correct expectations if you are going to do all of that, but, uh, yeah, I asked, uh, one of our investors, he had been writing in, he said he felt like Julius, that's, uh, Essie Mae's husband, her first husband anyway, uh, who died at forty-six, uh, where he said she didn't seem very empathetic towards him, and we were talking about his, you know, how he's presented in the book, and just like, wow, I mean, even Dr. Downey, suspected racist, he said, "Hey, Wanda's working on this book, and I told her to make sure that you include your dad, 'cause his story's so important, and attorney, worked for the NAACP, and blah, blah, blah." Bludgeoned by enforcement officers, couldn't get a job, couldn't get hired, uh, dies at It's absolutely horrendous, uh, and then I talked about that, she's getting all this money, we did the inflation calculator, you're getting twelve thousand dollars or more at a time, regularly, even if it's, you know, once a year, twice a year, like, wow, I'm married to this person and, and I'm not gonna tell them about all this, like, woo, that's a lot to, uh, like, I don't, I, I am not married, I've not been in, you know, any sort of attempted marriage, but I mean, wow, that's the sort of thing, phew, you will not be married long, like, to what? You've been hiding what? What from, oh my goodness. Uh, and we talked about that last week, Julius and his views, just asking even about, hey, Strom Thurmond is your what? You said he's your what? Your father, F.A.T.H.E.R., he's your father? What do you mean he's your father? How? How does he qualify as your father? Remember that? He was asking all that, he didn't get to present any of that in his own words to his offspring, he didn't even tell them about all this till after he's dead at forty-six. One of our investors, said investor, in fact, we were talking about all this, so he had his notes on chapter nine that we didn't get to, 'cause we hadn't got that far last week, uh, so he writes about chapter nine. Senate Majority Leader Trent Lott of Mississippi, uh, "We're proud of our, uh, massive resistance campaign, and if the rest of the country had done all the rest, we wouldn't have had all these problems. Lott was simply expressing the truth of how many racist white supremacists truly think, absolutely." Number two, Armstrong Williams, a prominent black Washington DC columnist, born and raised in South Carolina, Thurmond became Williams' mentor, became one of Thurmond's most trusted advisors, when Thurmond would have his hair transplants dyed that peculiar shade of orange, he would summon Williams to make sure they were the right color. Confidential assistant to Clarence Thomas, Thomas famously refuses to read the newspaper, Williams would keep him, Thomas, plugged into the outside world. Arranged for the justice to play hoops with Charles Barkley in the Court's Gym, wow, that is at least two cowbells there. Uh, teamed with Stedman Graham, Oprah's boyfriend, to found an international public relations firm, close friend and business manager for Dr. Ben Carson, and became his campaign manager when he ran for president. See, The Man Who Became, The Man Who Would Make Ben Carson President by Jason Zingerle, GQ Magazine, March fifteen, two thousand and fifteen. Number three, The Thurmonds Were Publicly Acknowledging Me As Their Blood Relation. Racist man and racist woman have done a masterful job in brainwashing us into our need for white validation, I had that term written down. Number four, South Carolina, let the South Carolina Legislature voted to add my name to the, to my father's statue, albeit at the bottom, rather than the top of the list of his children. How tacky is that? Number five, The American and Confederate Flags Continue To Flutter Softly And Peacefully Together In The Gentle Southern Breezes. I think I hear the sounds of Dixie playing in the background, hmm. Number six, The United Daughters Of The Confederacy, Anything But A Racist Cabal Of Ancestors Of Slavehoes, that was so flowery. Robert E. Lee, uh, is hardly a Klansman, many black slave owners, uh, slaves who fought and died for the Confederacy empowering, such a labeling is as racist in its own way as the Confederacy. I am every bit as white as I am black. Was her application accepted into the UDC? I have not seen an update as to whether they actually accepted her, which is, you know, that's something right there, 'cause I had an article, I can, uh, go pull it, uh, if, 'cause we have time, there's no other audio, but I had, I researched that, too. Anyway, just curious, I just kept repeating in my head, VGQ, 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 while reading the, hey, hey, victims guaranteed qualified. Uh, in spite of the confusion of the author, I think the text provided a lot of constructive information which I found interesting, should be read by all of those interested in learning about racism, white supremacy, and the Palmetto State of South Carolina. Oh yeah, if you live in South Carolina, or have, you know, relatives, or any sort of connection to that region, this should be in your counter racist library, and not just, "Oh yeah, da-da-da-da, I read this book," right, you know, I listened to the whole book study, so, yes, I heard it all, notes, thoughts, observations, paid attention, absolutely. Wow, you can learn so much with this text. Incidentally, as I said, I did ask, uh, the same, uh, reader about empathy, 'cause he said he didn't, uh, feel as though Essie Mae was very empathetic towards, uh, Julius, who died at forty-six. So, he wrote in, "In my comment regarding reading number seven, I use the word empathy as opposed to sympathy in characterizing how Essie Mae relates to her father Strom, as opposed to Julius. Empathy distinguished from sympathy, defined as an understanding of someone's point of view, even though you may not agree with it. Sympathy being a sheer emotional feeling. The reasons I came to the, to this conclusion are, one, Essie Mae's continual arguments with Julius in which she defends Thurmond and dismisses Julius's arguments. For example, when they argue about Essie calling Thurmond father, see, she dismisses his reasoning as Julius acting like the lawyer he was, the lawyer he wanted to be. Number two, Essie continually infers that Julius was an alcoholic, but apparently he was constant, consistently able to hold high functioning jobs, never was arrested for intoxication, never was abusive to her or the children, and never unfaithful. She doesn't exhibit the same understanding of Julius's behavior as she does for her father." Hmm. Three, lastly blaming Julius's premature death over his sadness from the assassination of JFK, now I talked about that before, uh, without discussing all the personal difficulties that Julius experienced in life due to racism, white supremacy, I saw as a deflection from all the personal trauma that Julius experienced in his life. Is the deflection because if she discussed these truths, it would point back to the racist behavior of old Strom? Question. However, I may be, I am being too hard on Essie due to my own identification with and sympathy for Julius. Uh, let's see, got that one, chapter nine. Oh yes, the additional research, yeah, it's just, anytime you read a book, I would say, if you have the time, right, if you don't have to narrate it, that sort of thing, uh, man, anything that folks mention, and I'll take, well, like, with some of the things that she mentioned, like View Park, she talked about moving out there to California last week, and they have whole documentaries and research projects about gentrification of View Park, which she talked about as being, oh, my, let me get to my notes, I forgot, I didn't even do my notes, and then we can, if you dialed in, if you have extra thoughts and all that, star six one, uh, we don't even have second audio, we finished the book, do my notes here. So, chapter nine, so we pick up, old Thurmond is getting frail, heck, he's been around a full century, he's had his run. Uh, so, as was mentioned, Bay Area Mom, one of her son, hey, moved to Seattle, were we not supposed to read this book? I knew this, in fact, when I heard all this, it reminded me, I knew all of this. I picked up this book before, like, sometimes you get books and you read them when you are supposed to read them. I knew there was a Se- uh, Seattle connect to this, uh, and that some of her offspring were here, and that they had written about all of this, it was like, oh man, we should do this, blah, 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 you see, hey, maybe I can bump into them, and, you know, all that stuff, uh, but, s- s- or maybe not, he says her offspring, uh, he comes to Seattle. Let me just read it exactly. Ronald, in whom my father took special pride in sending through medical school, had settled in Seattle where he had become a successful emergency room physician. He had married and divorced and was remarried, his first wife was the daughter of one of the Tuskegee Airmen, the famous black flying squad during World War II, dun, 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 and he dumps her to get a white woman. That's not funny, but, woo, Seattle, uh, Ronald had been our family's Moses, the biblical metaphor, leading the way to the cool, green, racially harmonious Pacific Northwest. Gus T. has lived here, I have bragged about Seattle a lot, right? Haven't I said it's the best plantation ever? I've said that for a decade, right? I have never, ever said anything to suggest that this is the Garden of Eden, promised land, I think, I don't even call it a city, right? I've said that for a whole decade, plantation. Racially, I don't even know what, like, what? 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 Like, what does that, what? I can't, the frickin' Seattle Public Library, they boot out black children almost exclusively. They just had a report right on the front of the Seattle Times about so-called racial disparities in education. They didn't say nothing about, man, it is racially harmonious out here. They, I've never seen anything like that, any, what I will say, though, is, ooh, we, if you are- Any, what I will say though is, ooh, we, if you are coming from South, and that doesn't even make sense, because she had been in California. Like, no, 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 I was gonna say, if you're coming from South Carolina, like, oh yeah, I could see, because they don't have a lot of black people in this area. So, it will seem very different than, so like, matter of fact, even if she had come here in the nineteen sixties, the frickin' Black Panther Party stormed the administrative, administration offices at the University of Washington in nineteen sixty-eight because it was not racially harmonious. I mean, how much information do you want about the racism, white supremacy in Seattle, Washington? Hopefully in all this time, we've covered some of that, uh, over the years on the program. Uh, let's see. I do say it is nice, she could've just said that, and it would've been like racially harmonious. Let's see. She says, "I marveled to my father that I had thirteen grandchildren by implication his great grandchildren whom he had never met. If only he had said, 'Bring them all down to Edgefield, let's have a real family reunion while I'm still on this earth.' Instead, he told me to fro- to fry things if I had to fry at all, in canola oil, which is the lowest in saturated fat, and to be sure to add fiber to my diet, and offered her Metamucil." That's what I mean about it, so many components of this book that I just think are so, in fact, the very first one, when she first meets Strom Thurman, remember when she goes to his office, and the black servant, slave, comes to answer the door, and she thinks that that's her father, and she's gonna run to embrace him? Uh, Harold Ford was interviewing her on Book TV for C-SPAN. Now, he talked about this and chuckled and thought it was so funny. I said, oh my, as soon, like, the very first, it wasn't anything I had to ruminate on and come back a week or a month later, like, the very first time it was said. I'm sixteen years old, I've been lied to about who is my father for the first thirteen years, what if sixteen, right? Cause the mom was thirteen, then she gets all this later. Uh, and I'm so confused, I'm about to hug a random black person, it's daddy, and this is just some slave. That white man is my dad, and I don't even, I'm, what's funny about that? I'm a worthless negro from Virginia. You can tell me, like, hey Gus, you just don't have a sense of humor, you know? You're just an ignorant coon. That's funny, that's, what are you talking about sad? What's sad about that? She recovered, she went on, she went on to have a way better quality of life than anything you've ever known. Nah, just let me know that, no problem. Me personally, I would be devastated. I'm that confused? Remember that word? Woo, when we get the children, remember that word? Remember that word? Remember that word? I'm that confused that I'm sixteen, I could almost be drafted, and I'm running up to strangers thinking that that's my father? I gotta sit here and wish, I got my children, my grandchildren, your great grandchildren, and this has been the whole theme. Remember she got so excited because he said the D-word? White validation, saddest book I've ever read. Uh, and then this, wait, see this weight thing? Because see, that right there is white supremacy racism. I've said all along, hey, everything he's saying about diet is accurate, but in a system of white supremacy racism, I mean, just all of that cortisol from old Strom and folks saying that your children can't go to school, and, oh, we gotta be careful, we got these raping nigga males, and woo, all that, cortisol levels, she said that herself. Meets with that, I don't get, my dad doesn't say, hey, daughter, let's go out and get something healthy, let's get some collard greens, carrots, Brussels spr- hey, you know, I'm a fool about those Brussels sprouts, you know, and get some fresh water, oh, get some, some of that good Fiji water, hmm, and have a good meal and talk about your future, talk about education, talk about my great grandchildren. Nah, here's some hush money, gotta go. Wait five minutes before you come outside, I don't want anybody to be seen with any negro woman, I'll talk to you later. She said she sat there and ate all the food by herself, remember that? And then to come and give all these tips about it, and she, she is self-conscious because she keeps talking about that, and she was overweight, she talked about having diabetes, that's white supremacy racism. Even her children are larger than what would be a healthy body weight. White supremacy ra- and they, get to that audio segment, let's see. Let's see. She said Strom Thurman, he went on about military preparedness, and how many enemies America had in the world, and how vigil- vigilant the country needed to be. There are still communists, he warned, the Chinese, the Arabs, like, uh, non-white people, victims of racism. It's always gotta be some non-white boogie monster, oh, we gotta have military, ooh, we gotta have more arms and bombs to go and shoot and kill some Saddam Hussein. Got dark people, we got these Arab sand negroes and things we gotta deal with, neutralize. Uh, let's see. Oh my God, they had the one hundredth birthday celebration for old Strom, uh, and they wheel in, they said, alluding to my father's legend as a ladies' man, a Marilyn Monroe impersonator sang Happy Birthday, just as the real Marilyn had sung to JFK. Now, all of that, now that JFK is rumored to have an affair with her, see, that's what I mean. They will wait until Dr. King's holiday, and then say, oh, you know that old Dr. King was stepping out on Coretta, you know that, don't you? Mm-hmm, don't you know he was cheating on her? Oh yeah, we got the FBI tapes and everything, that's the only proof that they have. Coin tell, alleged coin tell pro recorder, oh yeah, he was unfair, that old, that other that was Strom, that are the more raping negroes, you know? Can't control their penis, you know? I say consistently now, JFK, he's also rumored to be a so-called ladies' man, they don't do that with him, when they mention that, you know, you know, he was stepping out on Jackie, you know? You know, he was unfaithful, they don't do that. That's old Kamala, we just let, but, hey, they were both assassinated. We can't tell the whole truth, as they say? No, you don't do that? Oh, okay. In fact, we can kinda celebrate it, yeah, that old J, he was a good, look at that old sly fox, yeah, and he looked Marilyn Monroe, look. And then to have Marilyn Monroe, he's a hundred years old, that's another one that sent her like, come on, man, come on, act your age. Thank you for your service, we appreciate all of your good deeds, and why do we have to have some scantily clad woman come in, and then, come on, come on. And then you go, we gotta fuss at Bill Cosby. And then we gotta castrate him a tail. And then Dr. King was all lecherous and all the rest of it, like, come on, come on, come on. Let's see. They said Democrats came for Senator Trent Lott's hide, uh, one, that's that whole dichotomy, Republican, uh, Democrat, we talked about that for like, many, 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 many years, uh, just totally, that's just two components of the system of white supremacy political party, left hand, right hand, one body. Uh, came for his hide metaphor, I don't even know what that means, other than that, hey, that is kinda cannibalism, right? But then the other component of it, what does that even mean? Like, came for his hide? Really? White people don't get fired, they get transferred. Uh, let's see. In June of that year, this is two thousand three, when his daughter Julie presented him with what the press called his first grandchild, once more, my feelings were hurt, but that was the name of the game we had been playing for the last six decades. Once again, saddest book I've ever read. And then, game? What are you even talking about? Like, this is your life, your family? You have to lie about this? It's almost like you don't have a family, you have to, you don't. I mean, they're like, same thing we came back to, is he a father? Is he a grandfather? How? Hush money, that's how he demonstrates his concern. He paid medical bills, that's hush money too, like, I could pay medical bills and hook up your child, I mean, that's great, you take all the help, nothing incorrect about them accepting that assistance, but I mean, really? Really? We put your name on a plaque at the bottom? Same thing, Dr. Gerald Horn told us about that, that they have her picture up like off to the side, uh, they have all the white, acknowledged, legitimate children proudly framed next to him, and then, oh yeah, over off in the dusty corner here, oh yes, Essie Mae, yeah, yeah. Uh, let's see. American and Confederate flag, that's, to me, really, that's the same thing that I just said with the Democratic and Republican Party. Two flags, same thing, same colors even. Uh, let's see. She said Strom Thurman, if life was a game, got that again, I thought that game we're playing, power system, that's what we're talking about, of white supremacy racism. Uh, but Strom Thurman won it, uh, he lived a hundred years with almost perfect health, he had enormous success, wielded immense power and served his country with great honor both at war and peace. He had beautiful wives, beautiful children, raped children, uh, a beautiful life as well as a prominent place in history. That is white supremacy racism. Like, yeah, you can do whatever you want, have a grand time at it. Some get to have a little more fun than others, but I mean, yeah. And off a generations of white supremacy racism. Phew, next book, next book. Continues, the world, duh-duh-duh-duh, but he and I had never so much as sat down together for a meal, that's another pause, saddest book ever, ever. He's supposed to be a health nut and all this about nutrition, we never, he could've brought food, they could've sat quietly in his office and had lunch together, right? He could've, in fact, he could've, hey, I'm Strom Thurman. I know a spot in DC, I get the whole place cleared out, it'll be just us, and we'll go in and meet privately, I'll tell the staff that you're a friend from back in South Carolina, and we'll meet and have healthy food and chat enough. He could've brought all the grandchildren and done that. Easy, he could've done that in California, super easy, cause hey, we don't even know anybody out here, won't stick out, we go get a private room, come to your book. Anyway, let's see, never sat down for a meal, we had never said, "I love you to each other", saddest book ever, "We had never confronted the reality of our relationship." What a relationship. "Too, too much remained unsaid, I was so grateful just to have a father," I guess in name only, really, "and checks, hush money, and name, that I had never been brave enough to risk losing him by rocking the boat. Now, I was seventy-eight years old, this was no time to start rocking." That's many of us, even if we don't have a white father, we can have eight black grandparents, and we have been conditioned, hey, let me not rock the boat, keep my mouth shut, just go along with how things are. Gusty included. Uh, she's reflecting, talking with her, uh, children about all of Strom Thurman's immense wealth, uh, and she gets to think of like, man, all this expertise in those eminent domain cases, like the way the Savannah River site got their land? They did boot a number of black people, and that's even include, even Dorothy Dandridge. Hey, yeah, so did he really fight to get those black people the best property value that they could? Really? And did he take an equitable cut? Now, I mean, really, if you're Strom Thurman, you wanna do right by the negroes, I'm gonna take a smaller cut for the black people of South Carolina, or did he do the opposite? Let's see, she said, oh my God, let me, I just, what I just said, off a generations of white supremacy racism, she said, uh, that Thurman, just hold on to your property, no matter what you do, property is the best way to get rich in this country, white supremacy racism, really, but just buy and hold. You sell your children before you sell your land, I remember him joking, not really, a joke that hit close to home, now, she doesn't give another sentence, but I mean, in my view, none needed. Uh, let's see. Next, as I said, Wanda, so, I don't think, this is the first time that we actually hear Wanda by name in the book? And Dr. Downey had just talked about, Wanda's supposed to be writing a book about her experience, he thought the white co-author inserted too much of himself in the book, and she wanted to give a more complete picture about their family and their history and all of this. Have no idea when this book will be coming out, but if Dr. Downey's involved in vo- in any way, yee, uh, let's see. We don't get Zachariah Walker on the way out, but we get television again on the way out, when she's given like the roll call for who her, I cannot believe, I'm so thankful whoever our listener was who said that Frank Wheaton's offspring, uh, was in good, or if I got it the other way around, either way, his relative is in Sanford and Son, like, I can just take that as another little signal from the Creator, yes, we are exactly, exactly where we are supposed to be, this was exactly, the book we were supposed to be, correct time and place on the counter racist journey, replace white supremacy with justice, but, Sanford and Son? Uh, let's see, so when she's giving Frank K. Wheaton's credentials, not Sanford and Son related, uh, that he worked for James Worthy and Flojo, and, uh, that he had important white clients, now, I almost thought that was, uh, a redundant, important white, she could've just said important clients or white clients, not both, like my comedy hero Milton Berle. The influence of television in this book, and just in general, is staggering, and again, most of this book, she's been talking about television like when it was in its infancy, when she didn't even have a television, and she's talking about TV and movies all the time, mostly white television stars. And seeing, even in Gone with the Wind, imagining herself as the white actress in these films. Really be alert about that, hey, I, don't have a TV in your house if you're gonna have children, this would be an exhibit Y. It is extraordinary, the influence that it has on your thinking and can have for a lifetime, cause she was talking about a lot of the television that she watched during her formative first eighteen years on the planet, and beyond even, Milton Berle. Uh, let's see, she continues. She said, "Like Wanda, Wheaton urged me to tell my story, which he guaranteed would be an inspiration to blacks and whites alike. He felt if anyone could help bridge America's racial divide, I could." I've heard this so many times from individuals who have one white parent and one non-white parent, and I mean, all the way down, where they somehow feel as though they are inspired, or they have like a divine mission, and it'll be that same sort of vernacular, "A bridge the racial divide, and I'm, I'm uniquely positioned to heal the trauma between the..." I've heard this, it is so tacky and tr- like, really? If that were the case, there have been so many Essie Mays and Barack Obamas, Sally Hemings, this problem would have been, you know, taken care of immediately. All of that, just in my opinion, and it's all got this weird like Cinderella, like fairy tale, in quotes, kind of, uh, feel to it? That was even Barack Obama, like, yeah, hope, change, and I would leave, like, what are you talking about? You are su- confused, keep that in mind, we hear from her children, that is to come. Uh, let's see, and then that bridge America's, if there was again all this divide and separation, Strom Thurman would have never had his penis in a black child. Uh, let's see. She refers to herself as the Black Joan of Arc, I don't, no idea what that means for this case, um. She says, "Frank Wheaton luckily was associated with a very WASP-y, meaning white Pasadena law firm, Scalinos, Sheldon, and Novell, Novelli. Also in our corner was Harry Scalinos, the senior partner of the firm, who had been stationed in the military in South Carolina, and was intrigued rather than terrified, as most lawyers would be by the prospect of taking on the sacred cows of Dixie, armed with white armor." Frank wrote to my half-brother Strom Thurman Jr., now, that even right there, white armor, that's what protects you in the system of white supremacy, not negroes, white armor. Even when she listed important clients, it's not even like she listed like a white, you know, powerful person at a firm or whatever. know, powerful person at a firm or whatever, she listed like a white comedian, entertainer, like, I'm not saying that's not a powerful person, I'm just saying like, we have heard from like black judges in this book and black attorneys and, you know, people that in my opinion would way outrank some, you know, no count, white entertainer who may or may not have even graduated high school. Maybe my thinking is wrong, maybe I just don't, I don't get Milton Berle like I should. Uh, let's see. Uh, so with white armor, they contact Strom Thurmond Jr., as we just heard, twenty-eight, youngest, the, the, youngest ever, nepotism, got all that. The locals weren't about to challenge the sanctified memory and racial purity of the man they regarded as their savior. There have been so many biblical references in this book, but specifically references to Strom Thurmond and other white people as God, Jesus, say, it's just been over and over and over, lords of the plantation from beginning to end, white people have been referred to in some sort of god-like manner, and that is so common in the system of white supremacy, the religion of white supremacy. If white people are God, then there's certainly no reason for us to oppose white supremacy racism, they are God. That'd make us Satan too, right? For, you know, opposed to white people. Um, oh my God, and then she says, uh, the university, oh wait a minute, go back, Glenn Walters, who had graduated from state and then from the prestigious University of Virginia Law School, Wahuwa, Gus's Alomata, founded by Thomas Jefferson, who had his own secret romance with Sally Hemmings. Uh, I think our investor pointed that out, I mean, oh no, that was one of our, uh, listeners who dialed in, uh, who pointed that out, secret romance, and that's so common, and that, again, that's child rape, and that was his white wife's half-sister, so I mean, that's like all kinds of, no, this is not a secret romance, this is just the same history of trifling white child rapists, white men and white women, Mary Kay Letourneau, Seattle's history. Let's see, as I said Marilyn Thompson, hopefully we can get her on the program sometime this month and, uh, continue to chat. Uh, she writes about Strom Thurmond's relationship with Armstrong Williams. Uh, let's see. Hey, J. Strom Thurmond was a presidential candidate, he was a former governor, and I believe still holds the longest tenure as a member of the US Senate. So this is not some hobo, no count, white person. President Joe Biden gave the eulogy, he was a senator at the time, but I mean, even that. Uh, hey, I guess it would, how significant do you think this is? A white, former governor, senator, presidential candidate raping a black teenager? And this being made public circa end of two thousand and three? How big of a deal do we think this would have been at that time that we would need a distraction to kinda, hey, look over here, yeah, we know the nigga, we always, you know, probably rape somebody tomorrow, look at Saddam Hussein, nine eleven. How important do you think Strom Thurmond was? He did get a statue, several, in fact, that are still standing in South Carolina. How important of a person, a figure is Strom? Sixty Minutes, those, uh, interviews are on. I thought it was more important to hear from our president than those sixty-minute interviews, but they are on YouTube, so you can check out what Essie May had to say, uh, with Sixty Minutes, they are interesting, as is her interview with, uh, Harold Ford, he was Congress, uh, Congressman at the time, uh, on C-SPAN Book TV, I played a little bit of it here, and then we'll hear some of what she said at the Clemson, uh, Strom Thurmond Institute today. Last few notes, uh, let's see. She said she wanted a plaque at the coffee spot where she was released, I just, that's interesting way to frame it, that makes it sound like you were imprisoned, which again, makes it seem like this was some sort of, you had to be quiet about this, whether he said it or not, whether anybody told you directly, hey, don't you say anything about this, and I mean, hey, in a system of white supremacy racism, there are many, many times where white people don't directly tell us to do such and such and such, they don't directly tell us not to do such and such and such, but we understand, it has been communicated in a non-verbal manner, what is expected of us and we had better do it. I think that happens all the time, we can all probably think of many, many instances of that, but I mean, just the way that she refers to the money that she gets from Thurmond frequently as hush money, she never said that he called it that, she calls it that. This saying that she felt like she was being released, all of that to me just suggests that, hey, I've had to lie about this, I've had to keep a white person's secret, and that it's been extremely harmful for me for my entire, I have to hold on to this until I'm almost eighty years old, many of us not even gonna live that long. And I was lied to about this for the first sixteen years of my life, and then I replicate that lie with my children for the first, for some of them sixteen years of their life. Come on, sad, that's what I said about this whole book, uh, let's see. They had to get security when they were gonna go and reveal all this to protect her from irate Klansmen or other white supremacy types? Ah, man, um. She says there were a lot of tears in that audience, black tears and white tears, I really don't care, and I mean, really, I don't even care about the black people crying, and I mean, to be truthful, I don't really know what they'd be crying for, like I said, that this book is really sad, but I haven't been like weeping about this, maybe if I had heard her tell the story, maybe I would have been, but, you know, I just, I don't think it's a like, oh my God, no, it's just, wow, this is really, really sad and, oof, let's hurry up and get this problem solved, saddest book ever, but yeah, I don't, and especially seeing white people crying in a room together, I was like, oh man, this is really dangerous and nothing productive is gonna happen here, that's what I would think. Wait till we get that sound effect. Um, she says she felt so much love, I cringe whenever people use that word, no idea what they're even talking about. She says, uh, Frank told me he encountered two women who he was certain were Thurmonds, sobbing uncontrollably. Your relatives, aren't you? He asked them, they didn't answer, but he could tell they were there to wish me well, even if they couldn't say it. Pause right there, I've run into this so many times, we've had guests who've come on the program, uh, Andre Seward is one, Seward, he came on the program, I believe two thousand thirteen, maybe two thousand fourteen, summertime, and he talked about some of his white colleagues, and he said that, that he would talk about racism and they wouldn't say anything, they would just sit like, and he said, he said they would sit like little angels. And I said, wait a minute, are they being compared to Christ for doing nothing? You mean, they didn't say, like, they didn't mumble a word, they didn't do anything, they didn't help get any legislation passed, like, they didn't, you know, throw a few dollars at you, nothing? They just sat quietly and I felt their love and support just in their quiet, white silence. Are you ser- man, black people will get shot and accused of being rapists for sitting quietly and doing nothing, are you serious? There are so many times where white people doing absolutely nothing are praised as like the greatest John Brown ever. I have no idea, two white women crying, they could have been, can you believe this? Had sex with that nigga woman, oh, that's what it could have been, who knows? They were here to support, they wanted to see, even though they couldn't say anything. Okay, and especially, why would that be the assumption? I read you what was in the paper that time, why would I assume they came here to be? She said, I'm willing to meet, but not with open arms. Now, Essie May said that at least one of these white women, they did apologize and they went on to hang out with some of these family members and have a grand old time. Whoopi VGQ, you heard what was in the newspaper. I'm very aware, racists, they can hang out, have coffee, dinner, hey, have sex and marry someone assigned to the black classification and still practice white supremacy racism, seen it many, many, we mentioned Thomas Jefferson. Let's see, anything else? I developed friendships with Nancy Thurmond, just told you all that, it's strange to call someone my stepmother, who's actually decades younger than I, but that's what she is. All of that just seems really like, why am I seeking out this connection? Like, he married, he was sixty-six and twenty-two when he met, if anything, like, man, let me, let me, when did you all meet? What, what, let me, let me, let me, let me, I got lots of questions, lots of que- like, my mother was fifteen and I'm just trying to get to learn, I'm just trying to get an It would not be, oh, I'm so glad to be hanging out with my stepmother, like, what? Even that would feel bizarre, like, what, my stepmother who's, as she said, decades younger than I, like, what? All of it is just so creepy and tragic and, ooh, uh, as mothers and as, oh, we continue, as mothers and as Thurmonds, she has never referred to herself as a Thurmond in the book. Strom Thurmond would have had a conniption if he had, if she had referred to herself as a Thurmond while he was alive, even he might be rolling over in his grave, Thurmond, what? Remember the way when she thought, hey, maybe, maybe I could go to South Carolina, you, what? You're a nigga woman, get out of here, come on now, we got a nice nigga college for you, come on. Victims guaranteed qualified, uh, we both loved, oh my God, we have so much more in common than might meet the eye, we both love to talk and we talk about everything. We often speak on the phone and I try to see her whenever I go back to South Carolina, which has been frequent. Are you serious? We love to talk, are you ser- all I can say about that, man, like, wasting time talking about nothing and just chatting, 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 like, we need to cut back on that big time, just chatting and chatting for the sake of chatting, even with other non-white people, like, hey, we have way too many things happening, let's try to be as constructive as possible, no wasting time or the phone or chit-chatting at the coffee shop. Uh, let's see. So then she talks about all the white people that she's had dinner with and blah, 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 and lunch with, going out to having lunch and dinner with a white person, like, cannot be the goal, uh, I mean, white validation for sure, but that cannot be the end-all, be-all. I know Dr. King's sitting down at the table and blah, 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 but I mean, really. They put her name at the bottom of the statue, she got an honorary doctorate by South Carolina State, I'm just, I think I've seen way too many, especially when it gets to sometimes they gotta take the doctorates back, right? With Bill Cosby and stuff, like, I'm over all that too, like, no unnecessary pieces of paper and award ceremonies and all this, let's just replace white supremacy with justice. And incidentally, I'm not even really sure, like, your mother was raped as a child by a white man and you helped him lie about this, I'm not saying she lied, but keep his secret, like, that feels like I'm being euphemistic, and you helped him lie about this for like sixty-five, seventy years, why is that worthy of, uh, is it because she came out and told about this eventually? Like, even that, like, I don't know, is that worthy of, I don't know, like, and that's another, you can feel free, hey, I'm a worthless Negro from Virginia, just like Zachariah Walker, so maybe I'm just not understanding, I will never get an honorary toothpick from anywhere, but I'm just saying, like, I don't, did I miss it? Maybe I wasn't paying attention, is this, did you, is this worthy? Like, even if it's just, hey, she had to endure this and racist Strom Thurmond is her dad and blah, 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 and everybody thinks he's, you know, the worst guy ever and she has to deal with that and then, you know, lie about it with him and then she comes out and shares, is that worthy of a doctorate? Let me finish my notes and then y'all can, if you have a thought on that too, let's see. Oh, she says, uh, I also spoke at an all-black Baptist church in North Charleston where the mayor presented me with the key to the city that was the dichotomy of Charleston, that was the dichotomy of my life. Pause for Walter Scott. Pause for State Senator Reverend Clementa Pinkney, the Mother Emanuel, AME nine, Charleston indeed, lots of progress. Um, they, again, they made a shrine of the mansion where Strom Thurmond lived, the White Mansion, they made a shrine to the boyhood of Edgefield's favorite son, shrine, that even has the religious spiritual sense to it, like a lord, God, Strom Thurmond, rapist. Uh, we toured, again, so appropriate, Old Buncombe. Indeed, uh, I think else. The word changed, it's in this book sixty times, I think that's so important, cause it's, there's so much emphasis on how much things changed in South Carolina and how much Strom Thurmond changed, Joe Biden in the eulogy kept over and over, Strom Thurmond changed, Strom Thurmond changed, Strom Thurmond changed, the man changed, he evolved, he changed, like, are you serious? Are you serious? In fact, I think the word father is in this book a hundred fifty times, just if you need, like, comparison sake, father in here a hundred fifty times, the word change, oh, excuse me, the word father's in here four hundred ninety-seven times, sorry, four hundred, it was Carolina, that was the one that I looked, just to try to get a, there we go, Carolina's in here a hundred forty-two times, father, or excuse me, change is in here fifty-nine times, and a lot of it is around how much Strom Thurmond changed, how much South Carolina changed, uh, whatever that means, again, Dylan Storm Roof, change, 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 change gonna come, Sam Cooke, indeed, uh, let's see. She said, I would be honored to join the National Society for Daughters of the American Revolution to encourage the rich dialogue between blacks and whites. Again, that is, is really tired lame rhetoric, uh, she mentioned Thomas Jefferson and Sally Hemmings' secret romance, I'm sure they talked in between all the raping, I'm sure they said a word or two. Black people and white people have been talking for centuries, that's not the problem. Uh, she uses the metaphor comparing white people to Simon Legree, and many people do, like, that's the only way we can conceive of, okay, so a real racist is this McBelieve slave master in a fictional book written by a white racist from about two hundred, almost two hundred years ago now. Uh, let's see, she said, oh man, and then we get all the justification, uh, about why she wants to join this organization. There is a report, I'm not gonna read it here, but there is a report that details all of this and some of the questions that people had and giving both sides and all that, when she goes to give her counter-arguments, uh, and saying that, hey, this is not a racist organization, and then it has to somehow go from that to, there were many black slave owners, I just highlighted many, like, many? How many exactly? Like, put it on skin, cause I just told you that the word change is in here exactly fifty-nine times, give me like, exactly, in relation and proportion to the number of white slave owners, how many black slave owners were there? And were they also victims of white supremacy racism? Uh, let's see, when she continues, when she says, and I have no problem if she wants to join these groups or any others, VGQ, if she has a right, she's supposed to be, again, I'm not even sure that they ever like officially, like, there's no big newspaper article, like, oh, the Daughters of the Confederacy, welcome, uh, Essie May to their, like, there's, I couldn't find anything of that sort at all, so I don't think that happened. Uh, let's see, oh yeah, when she comes back, she says, secondly, many of those who decry my joining the UDC tend to categorize me as a black person. I played the audio where she said, this is one where, I don't think this is Mr. Stadium, the white co-author's presence, I think this is authentic Essie May, because she said this like verbatim, when she went to speak at the Strom Thurmond Institute to a lot of white people, and it was, oh yeah, these folks gonna sit in here and say that they got a problem with it, saying that, you know, I should have done something to help civil rights, when they haven't done anything for civil rights themselves and they got a big , that's right, you telling Messy May, that's right, that's right. Uh, where she says, they may make the more subtle argument that anyone who's lived through and supported the civil rights movement should never join any organization associated with the abridgement of those rights. I don't remember Essie May like doing anything to support the civil rights movement, do y'all remember that? I don't, uh, I remember her husband, like, NAACP and all that, but I thought she said she was a quiet person, I'm not a revolutionary, I wasn't a firebrand, like, you know, I might be wrong, but, uh, and then she continues, she says, labeling her is as racist in its own way as the Confederacy itself. Now, again, what do you mean racist? A black person saying that they don't think you should join a group is in no way, shape, form the same as, and you're talking about the Confederacy, so we're talking about, hey, we can buy and hey, we can buy and sell niggers, rape, Sally Hemings, that's what you're talking about, like, what black person is saying and doing that? See, we do that all the time, like, comparing black people to racist white supremacists, just further showing how confused we are about what, why Mr. Fuller has it on page one. If you don't understand what racism, white supremacy is, how it works, everything else will confuse you. And I mean, this is like, in my view, also, a good heap of anti-blackness, like, wow. Uh, she says, uh, oh, cause she said this exactly, "Such labeling is as racist in its own way as the Confederacy itself. I am every bit as white as I am black." Confusion. And it is my full intention to drink the nectar of both goblets. Now, this is one, I said I was glad to get the Kindle, cause I wanted to see what everybody else highlighted, and I said, I haven't run across any highlights, I saw one, I think, until here. Twenty-one people highlighted the section that I just read, "I'm black and white and I intend to drink from the ne-" Uh-huh. Okay. Um, she says, uh, "I was a slave and I was a master, I was black and I was white," uh, confusion is lethal. Alrighty, uh, I will, let's see, you all gotta hear the sound clip, you gotta hear the sound clip, then we'll get our caller in New Jersey, I'll read the other notes from the listeners as well, y'all gotta hear the sound clip, this is her, uh, offspring. I'm so glad that this, we didn't have any more book left, cause this is, I think, one time I got all my notes in. So this is her, in fact, I'mma, I'mma tease it out a little bit, cause I, I didn't get all the notes in, let me get more notes and then we'll get to the, the sound clip. Whew. Alright, so one person wrote in last week, I forgot, "I was listening to the audio of Mrs. Williams biography, she is definitely, and she has it in all caps, a victim of racism and has no clue. I figured she would have suffered from the Molado confusion syndrome." Molado actually would be name-calling, because she didn't reference herself as confusion, but I think she's listing this as a syndrome, so, right on. Molado confusion syndrome, however, listening to the audio, it is beyond apparent that she would make excuses for Strom Thurman's lack of acknowledgement of her existence. It was als- it was almost painful to listen to the narration as you could feel the delusion there, that word, she lived in, yeah, yeah, very, very sad, very, very sad. Yeah, she has this in quotes, as like, a syndrome, Molado confusion syndrome, uh, for individuals who have one white parent, one non-white parent who, tragic, gonna be some confusion. Can I get in one more note real quick from listeners, make sure I don't leave anybody out? Oh, our narrator, gotta get her in, that way we can get our, alright, so our narrator, she wrote in, uh, wow, the story of the father who left his, oh, we got that one, got that There we go, okay. Uh, "I thought you and the listeners were effective at questioning, uh, author," so she's talking about Dr. Downey, Zachariah Walker, who's mentioned in this book, guest on the program Monday, "questioning Dr. Downey. After deliberately avoiding non-Clemson grads' question and adding confusing rhetoric about not advocating for violence, the author stated he was offended at the misrepresentation of his words." She has the emoji faces for, give me a break. Uh, "It is important that you immediately pointed out that he was practicing racism because, at first, I wondered if maybe he hadn't understood the question or heard it wrong. But no, he was one hundred percent using tactics of deception. This often leaves non-white people questioning ourselves when we don't realize what they are doing. I also appreciated retired firefighter's question about what the author is willing to do to solve the problem. When he included educating others, the listener pointed out that the author earlier stated that education will not solve the problem. I understood that to mean that, like all whites, he is not willing to do anything of significance to solve the problem, but will do many insignificant things to further confuse non-whites while increasing his personal gain, monetary and otherwise. Regarding dear senator, I'm thankful that my participation helped free up opportunities for us to learn from the supplementary information you discovered and shared. I'm reluctant to take a bow, but I have listened to the caller's comments and I'm satisfied that my contribution was in keeping with the quality of the book club." Absolutely. "Which has been so useful for all these years. Essie Mae Washington Williams lived in, lived a challenging life and did what she could, what, what she had. In chapter nine, she states, 'Whatever the placement, I'm honored to be there,' regarding her, regarding her name, being added to the bottom of old Strom's statue in typically tacky fashion. This is the entire sentiment of the book to me." Yep. "A non-white person manipulated by a powerful white ever since their formative years is expected to be confused," there's that word again, "and abused, yet consider it an honor." And she has, uh, uh, the crying emoji. "It is likely that the co-author influenced the tacky and trashy tone, especially when describing Strom. But the recording you shared of Essie Mae in her own wo- oh, wow. That's why I said some of this, like, she said it directly, like, oh, oh, sad." Victim, let me rewind, uh, da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da, but when the recording you shared of Essie Mae in her own words saying she int- oh, she missed, I'm done, I'm done, she missed, that's so funny, let me try it again, third time is a charm. Okay. Uh, "But the recording you shared of Essie Mae in her own words saying she intends to drink the nectar of both goblets, white and black," and she has the eyeball emojis, like, wow, "indicates that she was confused." Woo, like most of us are, absolutely, until the very end, about what it means to be white. It will be interesting to hear the story from the perspective of her relative if another book is published." Absolutely. Uh, her daughter Wanda, now, that is the segue, alright, so, now she mentioned, I did include it, I would've included even more audio of, uh, Ms. Essie Mae directly, but there were so many, oh my gosh, there was so much to include, the Savannah River plan and, you know, man, can't play everything. Uh, so this is from the Strom Thurman Institute. Essie Mae is the main speaker, I already played a little bit of, this is the one, she said the very audio that she just mentioned, this is the one where she went there and she busted the black people who said, you know, how are you gonna join the Daughters of the American Confederacy and blah, 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 and all that, uh, and Daughters of the American Revolution and United, uh, Daughters of the Confederacy and all that, uh, how are you gonna do this? And she chatted all the black people and got a big laugh, I played that segment before and I played about a good ten minutes from there. So, at a certain point, about thirty minutes in or so, she stops and her daughter Wanda gets up, starts speaking, and then her other daughter gets up and starts speaking, it's just about three minutes. Listen closely, thank you, caps on, this is, uh, from the Strom Thurmond Institute in South Carolina, the offspring of Essie Mae Washington Williams, and if, folks, if you haven't seen the video, what have you, they are both very pale, uh, they could not be accepted as white, I don't think, but they are both very pale, context of white supremacy.
I wanted to address the question, someone had asked about how did we feel about it, and I just wanna share that with you, I don't know who it was, but, um, just so you're aware, that, um, yeah, it did affect us, um, to some degree as we had gotten older, because you must understand, I'm a baby boomer. So, that being said, it, what happened during that period when I was coming up, I was in the struggle. And, again, that became a concern as I had gotten older, and, you know, it sort of created, um, some division, we talked about it in the household as we got older about, you know, who he was, but then again, we were on the West Coast, so we didn't really have direct contact, and it just, you know, bothered us occasionally, but then we come to realize as we had gotten older and understanding more about who he was, we had, um, I know with myself, I had a new found respect for him, but when I was younger, yes, it did bother me.
Well, I might as well go ahead. Thank you, that. Baby girl. Well, it was, um, about nineteen sixty-two, see, I had said I'd never come back to South Carolina when I was about seven years old, because there was an incident in Orangeburg, which, um, I was shocked, I was about six or seven, and that was the night I found out I was colored. I didn't know that, until my sister and I hopped up on some bar stools in a diner and the gentleman there, see, I said that very well, the gentleman there, decided, uh, he told my mom that we couldn't sit there, cause we were colored, and my mom says, well, I'm ordering to go. He says, well, they still can't sit there. So, my mother in her wonderful polite way told him what to do with his order. And walked out. Our dad and our two brothers were sitting in the car, cause my mother didn't want his food after that, even though the guys were hungry. And they'd ask what happened, my mother explained, and so, through all the ruckus that was going on, I was crying and weeping, and my mother finally said, honey, what, what's wrong with you, why are you crying? And I said, that man said I was colored, you know, and she said, well, baby, you are And to show you how racism is taught to children, I just never noticed that, I, I never, you know, talked about it, but went, went through my mind in about nineteen sixty-one, cause my father worked for the NAACP as an attorney, and he would bail out a lot of the Freedom Riders and people who marched, um, on Washington, people who marched in, um, Savannah, Georgia, and so to me, colored people were the ones who got run down by the German shepherds, holes down, so that was scary. So I finally got it straight in my mind, by the time I was nine, living in Los Angeles, I was able to be black, instead of colored. So when my mother took us, I was ten, to meet our grandfather, I got confused all
We could've been listening to Sanford and Son, right? It was so much laughter in there, we said, he said Frank, Mr. Wheaton's relative was on Sanford and Son, it was so much chuckling and, we just needed a, you old heathen and all that stuff, it put, put Red Fox joke in there and we would've been straight, right? Like, all that hean and ha-ha and ha-ha-ha. Anytime we're, uh, we're supposed to be serious and talking about racism and, uh, individuals classified as white are present and it's that much chuckling, like, oh, man, I, ten times out of nine, this is not constructive, but my thoughts, and then we'll get to the folks who, my thoughts, like, man, what is funny about any of that? Especially the end part where, that word again, confused. I didn't even know I was colored, and then that's a tragedy when I find that out, and then we go to Los Angeles, and now I'm black, and then I said, what did I say? Lying to children, Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, this is your grandfather, uh, now you're sixteen, well, this is the age where I found, you know, there is no such thing as the Easter Bunny, and that is not your grandfather. Like, what? And she said, so, and now I'm, I'm black and proud, remember she said that in the book? She said, we got an afro's and I'm, I'm black and proud, and that, what, what? Strom, Strom, the, the white man who says the niggers stay away from the ni- that, that's my grand, what, what? He said, now I'm confused, and then, oh, 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 why is that funny? I don't, a black person saying I'm confused, I'm, I'm confused about who I am, and repeatedly confused throughout my life, and a racist white man, a child raping racist white man, and keeping his secret is at the center of my confusion, my mother's confusion, my whole family confusion, and my dad, who she said, did all this civil rights work and who was beaten by police and died at forty-six, at the center of all of this, I'm confused and that's funny? That's like standing ovation, we got to jump up. It's the saddest book I've ever read. And, and again, you can check me, Gus, you are worthless Negro from Virginia, shut up. There's nothing sad about that, just let me know, cause I could be totally wrong. Uh, let's see, the folks that we missed totally, victim in New Jersey, uh, other folks, if you have commentary, star six one, victim in New Jersey?
Yeah, hey, how you doing, Gus? Um, it wasn't the laughter that got me, it was the, it was the applause, I'm like, towards the end, like, what, like, I'm trying to figure out what would you guys clapping about? And so that, that's what, it wasn't even the laughter that got me, it was, what are you clapping for? Um, real briefly, you brought up Armstrong Williams, I, I didn't know, I didn't know, um, that was, um, Armstrong's history, that he worked up under, uh, Strom Thurman, um, I had, um, I had, I had a, I had a lot of dialogue with Armstrong Williams. Um, so, uh, Strom Williams not, I mean, um, Strom Thurman not only, um, left, um, confused offspring, um, he also was the protege, um, if, if I can give him that title, for Armstrong Williams, who, you know, for years would, you know, downplay racism, um, um, and, uh, was used kind of like as a, a, a black mouthpiece, uh, oh, for the, uh, uh, Republicans Party, the right-wing Republican Party. Um, and he also is a relative of Clemente Pinckney, that's his cousin. Um, so, it's been years since I had dialogue with Armstrong Williams, but after the passing of his cousin, um, I would definitely, um, I would definitely be, uh, excited to hear, um, his views on racism today, you know, I haven't really heard any other commentary from him in years, yeah, but that's all I got.
Much obliged, uh, ma- maybe he learned well from Jay Strom Thurman and his friendship, maybe he helped him get some jobs and all that for, uh, Mr. Armstrong Williams, that would be interesting, talk about his relationship to Strom Thurman, ask some questions, might, uh, have some interesting stories to share. I think even in his biography, I think there is an interesting tidbit about how, uh, he, I think, influenced Richard Williams speaking at the White House correspond- nah, uh, Richard Pryor, there we go, Richard Pryor speaking at the White House Correspondents' Dinner, and I found, reading this goofy book, at, it's not goofy, I'm sorry, reading about goofy Strom Thurman, racist child raping, reading the bio on him, that's mentioned, uh, that he and Armstrong Williams, they helped get it so that Richard Pryor came and spoke at the Correspondents' Dinner and it was a big success, I think at the time that this was kind of a controversial thing, like, oh my God, you're gonna have that nigger and all the rest of it, and, uh, but anyway, at the time that I was finding all this out, Trevor Noah Cowbell, uh, was just speaking at the White House Correspondents' Dinner and it was not a big deal, and in fact, they had articles just within the past couple days that were giving the long tradition of who's done the White House Correspondents' and Richard Pryor was mentioned, and that is direct connect, him being there is directly connected to Strom Thurman and Armstrong Williams. Uh, let's see, let me get in one more note from a reader, and then we'll see if any of the other folks on the line have additional thoughts, the audio, uh, the audio, uh, listener wrote in, uh, "Greetings, Gus, although the book was extremely sad, it was definitely constructed, constructive, as I listened to the reading, which was performed brilliantly by the narrator, I struggled to find the words to be constructive and add value to the conversation, but I will attempt to do so. This book showed just how dangerous not understanding racism, white supremacy is. The younger generation gets frustrated and starts name-calling the older generation of black people for mistakes or attempting to do what they felt was right at the time. The way that Ms. Washington was victimized, it is clear that her thoughts and actions were manipulated by white supremacy racism, as is every non-white person. As you say often, the anger of some younger black people is misplaced towards other black people and should be placed towards white people. The problem, the way Ms. Washington treated her hu- oh, no, oh, that's what I asked about, uh, the way Ms. Washington treated her husband and kids, children, was very deceptive, lying, then receiving a commitment of marriage and then revealing the truth would be difficult for anyone to fully trust in their partner. As an attempted husband, any man providing for your family when you cannot would be the worst feeling imaginable. Not only that, but a- but a racist, secret handler of your wife and mother of your kids, not being able to prevent this would have, in my opinion, contributed to enormous mental and physical stress to her husband. I agree, very sad, indeed, but constructive, uh, he died at forty-six, Julius, that was not mentioned when they were talking to the crowd, uh, or him being beaten by police or him not being able to get a job even though he was a law school graduate, and then, yes, having some racist child rapist bankrolling your family, yeah, that, uh, yeah, mental health toll, indeed, uh, much obliged from Rod in Ohio, did any other, uh, folks with us have commented, they wanted to get in, thoughts from the audio or anything else from the book, our last session with Dear Senator?
Maybe, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, um, there was one part that, um, Ms. Washington Williams, uh, was talking about when it came to the idea of reparations, uh, I guess, she was saying to the effect that, uh, these discussions are, I guess, discussions that just people have, and I guess they don't go anywhere necessarily, um, uh, she brought up the stolen Jewish artwork during World War Two, um, if you check on the, um, uh, restitution, uh, jewishrestitution.org, I believe, um, those people who had their art stolen was compensated, uh, but, uh, with black reparations, there's no compensation, I just wanted to point it out, thank you.
There is a difference, there is a difference, uh, I just wanted, I didn't say a whole lot about, uh, Joe Biden's eulogy, but wow, he, he and Essie Mae used that word change a lot in terms of, uh, Strom Thurmond and how much of a change he made from so-called racist, even though everybody, he's definitely not a racist, but Joe Biden, he also used the biblical metaphor, or in fact, he just flat out quoted from the Bible, skip the metaphor, he, all the way, uh, he said Strom Thurmond's soul is free today, his soul is free, the Bible says, learn to do well, seek judgment, relieve the oppressed, judge the fatherless, oh, my Lord, woo, say that one again, judge the fatherless, plead for the widow, come now and let us reason together, said the Lord, though your sins may be as scarlet, they shall be as white as the snow. Come on, come on, I just said Essie Mae, she's got all these Lord and Savior and shrine, and, we're talking about a child raping racist, period, they didn't even take his stature, and, 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 hey, me too alone should be enough, are you serious, complicated, are you serious, complex, how much change was there now, really, we gotta sing Marilyn Monroe, he's a hundred years old and about to die, and we gotta have a tribute to his lechery, which is how Essie Mae got here in the first place. President Biden, right, anybody else's commentary they wanted to make sure they got in? Everybody good, everybody satisfied? Soon everybody got their fill of Essie Mae, I also thought it was significant when, all those years later, Essie Mae, she's talking to Strom Thurmond, he says, oh, yeah, you, you like this Judge Perry you all used to date, okay, and she's like, whoa, how'd you find out about, what, what, hey, that's, that's my job to know things, like, that's enough, like, now, hey, who is more informed about racism, white supremacy? He can mind her whole dating history. Hmm. Thought that, I had so many notes that I didn't, I think there were many times where I didn't even get all my notes in, but I do not think that was the case today, got everything, and I think I even read all of the many, many folks who, uh, wrote in, that, again, that makes any book club way more enjoyable, at least for me, uh, when there is participation for people in the book club where they feel like, hey, this is grand, and, you know, I'm looking forward to sharing commentary, that just makes it much more fulfilling and hearing what you all think and your different views on the book and what have you, so, always enjoy it, uh, way better. Got disconnected, sorry, my bad, my bad, got disconnected, right as I was getting ready to wrap things up, um, yes, as I was saying before I, uh, dropped out, uh, learned, I think I got all the folks, uh, who emailed, that was what I was going back to look to make sure I didn't miss any of the emails, um, huge thanks to all of the folks who contributed, as I said, it makes it, at least for me, it makes it a much more enjoyable experience when we do the book club, and you all are there and seeming like you're enjoying some of the content and perhaps learning something from the book that we are reading, so, much obliged, uh, I learned a lot, even if you all didn't learn a whole lot this time, it seems like some folks did at least, uh, I learned tons, uh, again, I would encourage anytime that you read a book, even if it's just words, uh, that you don't know or not, or are not super familiar with, look them up, that's an opportunity to learn, expand your vocabulary and get more skilled with your use, uh, of words, that's a big part of counter racism, and then certainly, hey, like, with the Savannah River site and other things like that, it's not like, you know, I was going and doing extensive research and had to go down and excavate and dig through fifty thousand books with a lot of those things, it would just be View Park racism, and it would be tons of things, because that's what dominates the entire universe, white supremacy racism, unfortunately, so that's what you can do a lot of times, if they mention an area or pretty much anything, just check and see how it relates to racism, white supremacy, you would be surprised to see what you can find, uh, with that, we will wrap things up, uh, we'll be here tomorrow for a neutralizing workplace racism, same time, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific, uh, with that, sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy racism, many of us, Julius Williams included, uh, we self-medicate, uh, just trying to do the best that we can to cope with all the terrorism, uh, try to find something healthier, uh, so that we can live along, we can have a hundred years of counter racism, hopefully we won't need all that much time to resolve this problem, but hey, let's have all that time so that we can be about our cosmic duty. If you're out and about, this is not a time to be in verbal confrontations with strangers, you should be thinking that they could be armed, if you didn't leave your residence, prepare to kill and/or die, exit, contact enforcement officials as you are leaving the vicinity, Julius, uh, Williams was beaten by enforcement officers, talked about that, right, just trying to practice justice, in fact, uh, if you're in a vehicle, as he was, you are sober, you are not on a mobile device, and you are buckled up, uh, just doing the small things that we can to minimize contact with race soldiers, badge or no, all of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy, we ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves, remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person, it has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately, Cal signing out, thanks all for tuning in.